Good afternoon. I call this May 12th meeting of the Albemarle County School Board to order. On the motion for the closed session. Ms. Johnson, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The motion carries. We have some motions coming out of the closed session. So, Ms. Alcaro, first motion, please.
I move to appoint Employee A to the new position as discussed effective July 1st, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Alcaro, second by Ms. Osborne, that we employ Employee A effective July 1st. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion one carries. Our second motion, Mr. Alcaro.
I move that we appoint the following students as student representatives to the school board. Andar Armand, Brisa Caballero Chigo, Ella Whitcomb, Sanuthi Amarasinge, Wei Ning Ding, and Valentin Dowd.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Alcaro, second by Dr. Acuff, that we accept the named students as student reps for this coming school year. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carries. Third motion, Mr. Alcaro.
I move that we reimburse Employee B for legal defense costs in accordance with Virginia Code, Section 22 dot 1 dash 83.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Alcaro, second by Dr. Acuff, that we reimburse Employee B for legal expenses that have been incurred. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston, roll call, please.
Ms. Carlson?
It's because I was looking at you.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The motion carries. Thank you. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. We will now observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Could I now have a motion to approve our agenda?
I move we approve the agenda for tonight.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, second by Ms. Alcaro, that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Agenda is approved. We now need a motion to approve our consent agenda for tonight.
I move that we approve our consent agenda tonight.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Osborne, second by Ms. Lee, that we approve the consent agenda. Discussion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
To introduce our board members and to make sure that all of our mics are working, Dr. Kate Acuff.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Mr. Jono Alcaro.
Jono Alcaro, at large.
Ms. Katrina Carlson, vice chair.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Rivanna District.
Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. And our student rep, Mr. Kofi Mason.
Kofi Mason, student rep at Albemarle High School.
Thank you. Moving right along, we will now go to our Spotlight on Education. Mr. Mason is going to introduce this segment of our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Page. As you all know, May is the month of mental health awareness, and there's a special event on Monday at our central office building that I'll ask Ms. Acuff to talk about after we hear from our special guest this evening. The National Alliance for Mental Health advises us that each year, millions of Americans face the reality of living with a mental illness. The importance of recognizing this month is to energize a national movement to fight stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for policies that support people and their families dealing with mental illnesses. We are enormously privileged that many of our students have long been active in this movement. Several years ago, students from Western, Monticello, and Albemarle High School testified in Richmond on the need for more mental health resources in schools across Virginia. Not only were these efforts successful in Richmond, but they were successful here in Albemarle, where this board added mental health counselors to our schools. As a student, I cannot begin to tell you how you've changed our lives in such a meaningful way and demonstrated the depth of your commitment to our well-being and to our ability to learn at our highest potential. We are enormously grateful for our continuing attention and sensitivity to our health and that of our teachers and staff. With us this evening to elaborate on how students are coming together as a team with our principals is Elijah Witt, who you all know from his service as a student representative to this board in 2020. I also want to acknowledge the presence of Elijah's principal, Ms. Jen Sublet, who has been a strong supporter of the Student Leadership Club at Western and of their mental health programming. Elijah will elaborate. Two of the goals in the Student Initiative have been a forum held earlier this year for the Western community, including parents, that included a guest speaker from the National Alliance for Mental Health, and the second goal being the strong interest of students in promoting mental health first aid training for teachers. Elijah, please join us at the podium to share some thoughts with us on student mental health awareness and support activities this year. Following Elijah's remarks, Ms. Acuff will share some details about Monday's event. Thank you.
Can anyone hear me? Good evening, board. It's great to see you all in person, as opposed to virtual year, and I want to thank the board for this opportunity today and everyone else involved. I would like to show, as Kofi mentioned, so Western Albemarle High School has a class called Leadership, very pertinent name, where students learn to teach, learn to plan schoolwide events, such as proms, Spirit Week, and so on, as well as learn public speaking and collaboration skills. The Mental Health Group, which is a group within the leadership class, was formed a few years ago with its goal to promote positive mental health, not only in WASZ, but also additionally throughout the Albemarle County Public Schools system through larger policy-oriented activities. So, I'm a senior, so last year during the junior year, virtual, during the 2020-2021 school year, the Mental Health Group saw a need for further mental health support for the student body as the effects of the completely virtual year were apparent. We wanted to provide resources and advice from other students in an easy access format, so we started the Mental Health Newsletter, which ran throughout the 2020-2021 school year. The group is a revolving door, so any students that year who want to contribute to the group are allowed to join, and with that, I also want to acknowledge this year's group, which is myself, Mason Rothenberger, Sean Teahan, and Kendra Oberg, and we work alongside with other students throughout the school to promote this. This year, well, in recent years, the Mental Health Week has been a large project for us. A couple of weeks ago, we wanted to promote Mental Health Week, which was something we put on the week before AP tests and final exams in the month of May, and for many students, this was their first experience talking about mental health, and we wanted that to be a positive one. So, we had therapy dogs, we had speakers, we had resources posted around the school available to students such that the first positive experience could be one where mental health can be celebrated, as opposed to something that is sort of, has a stigma of being behind closed doors. So, the WASZ Leadership Class has a history of not only planning amazing events, but also pushing for policy change within and outside of Albemarle County Public Schools, and so this year, the Mental Health Group wanted to push for requiring mental health student, mental health first aid training for all teachers, of which we're in the works of planning at this time. The Mental Health First Training, First Aid Training is, in its goal, very similar to physical first aid training. It's the immediate assistance of an individual such that further care can be provided by another, more highly qualified individual. Such training would assist teachers in identification and support of students that may need extra mental health assistance, and so we're in the process of developing a pilot program for that, and as I mentioned, we're a revolving door, so we're also setting up the next group of students, because we're all seniors, we're going to be graduating, to continue that work. And so, our suggestions to the school board is that we really want to support the teachers as much as the students. Although the mental health of students may be more visible, we also need to support the teachers and staff to the same degree and with the same figure. The pandemic built back the curtain on the private struggles of many, and so, we believe now is the perfect time to act. We've interviewed many of WASZ's teaching staff, and the absolutely unequivocal point is that they want to help their students. Teachers know us, the students, the best, and they're the ones that already expect to support us through four years of high school, so we want to make sure that we equip them with the training to do the job we already asked of them. So, thank you for this time today. Yeah.
Dr. Acuff, are you going to make follow-up remarks to Elijah?
I am, but I don't know if you want to have questions for him first?
Yeah. Are there any questions or any comments for Elijah before he takes a seat? We're really glad that you are back, so that we can see you in person, since you were our alternate rep during the second semester of this year, so thanks. Any questions for Mr. Witt?
Just, do you, do you, can, do you plan on continuing advocacy or work in mental health when you go away to school?
Yes, I really do. My time at the WASZ Leadership Class has been really transformative. I think that I've discovered so many things I want to continue on into when I go to university, at the University of Virginia, and I really want to thank Ms. Miracle and also our wonderful principal, Ms. Sublet, for some of that work with identifying kind of personally what I want to work on, what I want to continue, so certainly, I would love to continue this work.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Witt, you want to come around and shake hands with board members?
You ready for me?
Thank you, Elijah, yeah. And, Dr. Acuff?
Thank you, Elijah and Kofi, not only for your remarks this evening, but even more important for all the contributions you and your colleagues at Western and other schools are making to promote mental health. As my colleagues know, I've long been an advocate for promoting mental health and mental health supports in our schools, and now, when the impact of the pandemic on our children's mental health is in the news almost daily, recognizing its importance could not be more timely. As Kofi noted, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and Partner for Mental Health, a nonprofit local affiliate of Mental Health America, reminds all of us that a green ribbon is the international symbol for mental health awareness, and wearing a green ribbon shows colleagues, loved ones, or simply those you walk, meet down the street, that you care about mental health. And lighting up buildings magnifies that effort. Next Monday, Partner for Mental Health, on which I am a board member, has organized a lighted-up green event that will include a lighting ceremony on the front steps of the, count, this building. About 200 of the luminaires that you see, the candles at holiday times, will be fitted with green shades or green filters, so we can light that up. But the county office building is not alone. Many other buildings across our community will join in the lighted-up green event, including vendors along the downtown mall, City Hall, UVA Medical Center, Martha Jefferson Hospital, and even the Charlottesville Albemarle Regional Jail will have a few lights on its signage, I'm told. In addition to green lights to honor Mental Health Awareness Month, we will have a brief ceremony featuring some ACPS students, representatives from UVA Medical Center, Martha Jeff Hospital, friends of the downtown mall, Donna Price from the Board of Supervisors, and I will be there, not a big call, I know, but, and representatives, delegates, Rob Bell and Sally Hudson will also be there. Even with all these speakers, we are promising about a 30-minute event. We, as a school board, have worked with the Division to significantly expand mental health resources at our schools. We now have a mental health counselor or will in the next budget cycle at all 25 of our schools. In my conversations with some of the counselors, I've been told that they have never been busier. As part of the efforts to improve access to mental health services for our students, I want to recognize the work of and extend the school board's appreciation to Mr. Kevin Kirst and his team for their work in developing a new program that eventually will expand access to therapeutic mental health services for students at all ACPS schools. Today, as I understand it, it can take several months to obtain an appointment with a mental health therapist in our community. I know that therapists for children are particularly scarce. However, when this new program with Health Connect America, all three caps, is fully implemented later this year, it will dramatically improve that access. So, remember, the luminaires in the county office building windows and many other buildings across town will be lit green every night next week, and I urge all of you to join me in wearing a green ribbon and attending the lighted-up green ceremony Monday evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Acuff. Are there any questions for Dr. Acuff on the mental health, mental health presentation? If not, we will now move to announcements. Dr. Haas and Dr. Harrison have announcements for us.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Haas, it's my pleasure to update you on a couple of the projects that we have going. The first is the anti-racism orientation training. As you may recall, through our anti-racism policy, we expect all staff members to complete that process. I'm happy to report that 99% of our employees have met that requirement. 99%, that's pretty outstanding. We're looking at, out of the 2,759 employees, only 23 have not completed the process thus far. This has taken a great deal of work, but we're very proud of the work that all of our staff have done and the commitment that they've made to this work. Our principals and department heads will continue working with those 23 members because we did say 100%, so we're going to keep on working with them until we get a 100%. So, oh, congratulations, board, you guys also completed the 100%. So, we also created a way of recognizing of those departments and schools who completed the 100%. And so, this is on our Division website, it's live. So, any elementary school, for example, middle school, high school, other programs or departments, you can go in and you can see, Agner Hurt, 100%, all staff members. Okay? And it goes through. This is good work. And so, this has been launched, and that's that. Looking forward to moving on and continuing this, to continue to happen. Second announcement, just want to remind you all that we have the Seventh Annual Equity Conference upcoming, June 11th. Mark your calendar. From 9:00 to 3:00, we expect you to be there.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
I'm not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
So, when you show up, you are expected to be dressed appropriately. Okay? Promoting who we are in your t-shirts with the theme that says, "Wake up, everybody." Wake up, everybody! No more sleeping in bed. Time to teach our children a new way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, for those announcements, and also for our water robe for that day. So, thank you very, very much.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Harrison, I really appreciate it. Also, I want to thank Elijah Witt for attending tonight and during the spotlight, sharing your leadership work with us around our whole school community's mental health, and also Elijah's principal, Jen Sublet, who came with him to support tonight. Board members, at your seats this evening, we placed our second edition of our Keeping Our Kids Safe and Healthy in a Digital World, which has, plays a big role in students' mental health. This is the field guide that was developed, the first edition last year with our technology department, they've done really outstanding work with this. Right, it will be launched online, and then there'll also be paper copies going out to all the schools this summer, so topics ranging from device care, keeping students safe online, media balance and well-being, privacy and security, lots of good topics in there for our, for our students' families and for our employees. And I do want to just read briefly from the weekly check-in, I did have a great visit at Post High School last week, last Monday, with the staff and students there. If you're not familiar with Post High, it's a, it's a school in a house back behind Burley Middle School, near the, near the baseball field, had a great visit, and this week, I got out to Henley Middle School on Monday morning. Before I read that, though, I just wanted to, especially with all so many employees here this evening, I just want to say, I hope you all had a great week and are looking forward to the weekend. As of this week, we have entered into the last month of school, and I know there is a lot of emphasis on SOL testing right now. Knowing that we want students to do their best, educators, administrators, and support staff, do all you can to create the best possible conditions for them to show their learning to the greatest extent possible that a test can do. I want us all to be encouraged by the progress students have made this year, thanks to their efforts, as well as the efforts of all of us in our roles that we have made to support them in their recovery from the pandemic, which is still ongoing. By almost any measure, our students have made progress with learning recovery, as well as with their social, emotional well-being. There's more work to do, however, I commend all of our students, employees, and families for their amazing learning opportunities and accomplishments you have all made possible during what has been probably the most challenging school year any of us have experienced. What an SOL test may measure is finite compared to the compounding and inestably positive impact your support will have on our students, families, and communities. I want to thank the Henley Front Office staff, Alyssa Lane, Jean Smart, and Kathy Ziembah for your kind welcome as I arrived first thing on Monday morning. I met up with Principal Beth Costa, we walked the school, we visited a few classes. As you can imagine, there were SOL reviews happening, and the teachers we visited have found ways to engage students through the process of reinforcing their learning and memories. We went into Sarah Nunes' Math 6 class, students were working in groups to break down word problems and use correct mathematical formula that they need to solve those problems. There's a fair amount of competition going on in the class, the students are having fun. We also visited Leanne Pennington's English Language Arts 7 class. I don't know, most teachers are familiar with Kahoot, many of them are also now familiar with a similar program called Bookit. The students were going through literary terms, having a competition using that app, and there was vicious competition taking place, but they were also having a great deal of fun. The last class that we checked out was Frankie Aaron's art class. Mr. Aaron's had students developing personal color sheets with paint pigments, and the students were highly engaged in that work and were able to explain why they were doing it. We did have a chance to visit with the cafeteria staff, Keisha Wallston, Barbara Barber, Marie Marsh, great team there, and we also ran into the building manager for Henley, Wes Scott, as well as Charles Key, who's the manager for Brownsville. They often work together on the two sites to really maintain those buildings that are so big and heavily used, they just look beautiful, especially at this time of year to have just a great facilities there, so they're doing a lot of hard work. So, those are my two announcements for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Page.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Do any school board members?
I have a follow-up question from the last meeting. I see Mr. Caden Wright is here, he had an issue about clubs and things being able to take donations and payments online, I wondered if we'd made progress on that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for asking, Ms. Osborne. We have had Jackson Zimmerman, who's our chief finance officer, has reached out to Caden, so they can start working on that. He came in at the right time to dovetail with us on work that was underway, so we're making progress.
Okay.
All right, no other school board announcements or comments? We're now ready for public comment. Vice Chair Carlson.
Yep, I will start off by reading the public comment guidelines. The school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance, and provides for time during its business meetings to hear from Albemarle County residents and community members. Before public comment starts, I will announce the order in which the speakers will comment. Because there are over 10 speakers, because there are over 10 speakers, times will be limited to two minutes, and it will be indicated by that light that's up at the podium. When it's yellow, you have one minute left, and when it's red, your time is done. Speakers during the meeting are those submitting written comments, should state their name and address or magisterial district. Further, speakers should limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or the operations of the school division. Although the school board will not respond to comments made during the public comment period, school board members may address comments at the end of the meeting agenda under Other Business. Is there random likes?
It appears that the speaker is already speaking. I think Jennifer is working on reaching out to her to let her know that it hasn't started yet.
Okay. On that note, we have one speaker who is Zoom, which we have not done the Zoom in-person combo, so it might take a second, and we're already having some of those difficulties. I was going to start with her. Jennifer, would you like to try to figure this out, and me do people in person first?
No, we just need to switch over to her.
Okay.
You want to go ahead with her?
You know, while that, while we're figuring that out, I will go ahead and read all the speakers, we have 14 of them, that way you know where you are in the line and when you're going to be coming up. So, that's Bailey Logan, who will be doing the Zoom comment, followed by Vernon Leckie, Cheryl Knight, Amy Gertner, Maddox Mc, excuse me, Gail Burt, Maddox McIntyre, Margie Shepherd, Mary Nacy, Irene Crone, Chris Seaman, Becca Saxon, Josh Mound, Caden Wright, and Amy Lawford. I think that's her realizing it. So, Ms. Logan, if you can hear me, we're gonna... I feel like we can go ahead and do one in-person comment while we're trying to figure out how exactly this will work. So, Mr. Leckie, if you're ready? So Mr. Lecty, if you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Vernon Lecty and I'm the president of the Albemarle Education Association. I am very excited to see that the school board has put the resolution for collective bargaining on the agenda as an action item for tonight's meeting. State law authorizes you to work with us to figure out the details of the collective bargaining process that you would like clarification on. We are all professional county workers and can make this happen together. Charlottesville City Schools is doing this as we speak. And surely we in the county can also work together to make this happen. Two-way communication between us helps you to determine what is necessary to make improvements to retain and recruit a professional workforce for our students. 69% of ACPS teachers, school counselors, instructional coaches, LTIs, specialists, therapists, psychologists, speech language pathologists and other licensed professionals have signed an authorization card confirming their support for collective bargaining. Over 70% of drivers and transportation assistants have signed an authorization card. Over 80% of ACPS school nurses have signed authorization cards. Food service workers, instructional assistants, custodians, equity specialists, office associates, safety specialists, administrators and substitutes have signed authorization cards as well. ACPS workers recognize the need to have dignity and respect on the job. Passing this resolution shows your workforce that yes, you do want them to be heard and supported. They do deserve the right to negotiate their contracts, a right that educational workers across the country have. We are stronger together. Having a voice makes us stronger together. Having a respected and professional workforce is one of the best ways to help students. Now is the time for action to truly show appreciation and respect for all workers of Albemarle County Public Schools. Give educators the tools they need. We are telling you what we need. I ask once again that you adopt the resolution for collective bargaining submitted by the Albemarle Education Association. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Lecty. The... Actually, at this point, your name says Ms. Woodfin, but it seems like you signed up under Bailey Logan, but can you hear me? Whoever is on Zoom, Ms. Woodfin?
Looks like they're muted.
If you can't hear me, you're muted.
So Jennifer, can you send her a chat message?
Yeah.
Why don't we continue?
She's ready.
She's ready. Oh, there she is.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Molly Woodfin. I'm a senior at Montiel High School and I'm here on behalf of my group for Citizens Action Project, which is a project that is part of our government class. I'm here to speak to you today because my group would like to amend the dress code to only limit school attire that is profane, discriminatory or obscene and remove limits on shirts reaching the beltline or the length of shorts or skirts. As part of this project, we took a survey that of students from around the county to assess their stance on this issue. Through this, we found that 87% of students support having a dress code similar to the one we proposed and 79% believe that the current dress code targets certain groups of students based on factors such as gender, race and body type. Furthermore, dress codes that limit clothing based on how much skin is showing inherently body shame and sexualizes young people, primarily young women. One national study even showed that roughly 83% of individuals dress coded are girls. While steps have been taken in Albemarle County to make the dress code less discriminatory by removing language specifically referring to girls and boys, there is still more room for improvement. This is not only a feeling held by students, but also teachers and staff in the county. One teacher we interviewed said that amongst the teachers I've talked to, the biggest concern is we don't want girls to feel like they're being unfairly targeted and that currently I do think that we're inadvertently targeting a very specific type of girl. The primary argument in favor of upholding a dress code is that it can limit distractions. However, the teachers and students we interviewed and polled adamantly expressed that students have rarely or never been distracted by other students' attire in class. Amending the dress code to only limit school attire that's profane, discriminatory, obscene would bring Albemarle County Public Schools closer to a learning environment that is safe, supportive and provides equal opportunities for all students. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. If you have any questions, I'm Molly Woodfin. My email is a part of the ACPS email chain, so you can find it there.
Thank you so much for those comments, Ms. Woodfin. I always love when students come and speak. Our next speaker will be Cheryl Knight.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Knight. I'm a teacher here in Albemarle County. I have been for the past 23 and three-fourths year. I live in the city of Charlottesville. I want the school board to approve the resolution for collective bargaining. And the reason I would like to see collective bargaining become real in ACPS is that educators need to be heard. Let me say that again. Educators need to be heard by not even opening up a conversation with the Albemarle Education Association. Only two people spoke to our association about the collective bargaining resolution. Only two. Emails were sent regularly. Numerous emails were sent that asked to open up a conversation. Collective bargaining is all about negotiating and having a conversation. That would have been the first part of it. I think that we can make that happen. We're reaching out our hands to you to join us, to join with us, to work with us. We're not asking for some pie in the sky. We're actually pretty reasonable people. In fact, most of the teachers that I know work extra hard because they care about kids and they care about what happens in their buildings and in their schools and in their classrooms. And they want it to be good. They want their working conditions to be a successful place for them, their mental health and for their students. That's what we're asking for. We're asking for a seat at the table to talk about the things that are important to us. You get to hear a lot of things from a lot of people. I just want to talk to you. Are you willing to open up and talk to us? Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you. I do appreciate the job that you do. Also, I know that later in this business meeting tonight, ironically, you'll be looking at your pay. And I just find it quite ironic that you actually vote on how much you all get paid. And we don't even have a voice to talk about having five minutes to go to the bathroom during the school day. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Amy Gertner.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Haas. My name is Amy Gertner. I'm a resident of the White Hall District. I have taught at ACPS for 29 years.
Could you pull the mic a little closer? It's hard to hear you.
Better? Much better. Should I start over? Okay. Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Haas. My name is Amy Gertner and I'm a resident of the White Hall District. I have taught at ACPS for 29 years. Three years ago, I stood at this podium and I shared with you my daughter's wise financial decision to major in accounting. Tonight, I'm here with my son, who is a senior at UMW. In the fall of 2020, Alex told me, "Mom, don't get mad. I talked to my advisor at PVCC and I want to change my major to early childhood education." I cried. Alex struggled in elementary school. He was diagnosed with ADHD in kindergarten. He did not meet the class benchmarks and he struggled to pass SOLs. But he has fond memories of elementary school. While I remember his many challenges, he remembers his teachers. His teachers and I advocated for him, but tonight I want him to know it is equally important for teachers to advocate for all educators. I have stood and supported the speakers for the last two board meetings. I am especially fond of you, I thought when Donna Evans stepped forward. Octavia Spencer says this line many times in the shack and I'm especially fond of many of the educators here tonight. Donna was Alex's art teacher at Broadwood and Jack Chewett. Kindergarten was a difficult year for us. Donna stopped me in the hallway that spring and asked if I had a moment to take a look at Alex's drawings. She spent 10 minutes gushing over his art. She was going to submit a piece for the school division calendar. 16 years later, I still get choked up thinking about how much her words meant to me that moment. A great teacher's true gift is not the knowledge of their subject, but their ability to connect with students and families. We need and deserve a seat at the table to help make decisions that are in the best interest of our students and educators. I do not want to fill out another survey. We want an invitation to sit down at the table and have a conversation with you. We want to talk about the support we need to do our jobs well, to take care of our health and our families. Thank you for your time and thank you for those who came to stand with us tonight.
Thank you for this. I just want to mention that when you're celebrating, always welcome to stand, always welcome to hold the things, always welcome to express appreciation. But when we're going between speakers, if we could limit our applause or noise so that we can hear where the next speaker is, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. The next speaker is Gail Burt.
Good evening. I'm Gail Burt and I am the school nurse at Red Hill Elementary. It is such an honor to be here, speaking to you during a week that we celebrate school nurses, a national commemoration that was started 50 years ago. The role of the school nurse has never been more important as students continue the hard and stressful work of adjusting back to in-school learning and as healthcare may be harder to access for some of our families. School nurses may be the only provider that many of our students see regularly. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote in favor of allowing us to meet with our employer and negotiate the terms that we work under. This is really important for Albemarle County right now because nearly every school division across the country has the same problem. They need workers. They need teachers, bus drivers and school nurses. So to me, it's a good thing if we can say in Albemarle, please come work in our schools where we respect our workers and join with them to shape the best work environment possible. It's the right thing to do and now is the right time. That's why the school nurses have demonstrated one of the highest levels of support for collective bargaining. In fact, 80% of school nurses in ACPS have signed authorization cards. So during this week of school nurse appreciation, during which you sent us that beautiful letter, Dr. Haas and Mr. Page detailing all the work we've done during the pandemic, vaccinating, contact tracing, staying late at night, supporting families through illness, even death sometimes, I ask you to back up your words with action and vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Burt. The next speaker will be Maddox McIntyre.
Good evening. Can we all hear me okay? Hi. Nice to meet you all. My name is Maddox McIntyre and I use she/her pronouns. I'm a freshman at Community Lab School, clearly. You know, collective bargaining really seems to be like a pretty controversial topic considering the school board has never publicly come out or, you know, mentioned their opinions on it. The county staff members, they work really hard and they get paid like hardly enough to live comfortably off of. And trust me, I know. My mom is a teacher and she comes from a long line of teachers. Not only do they barely make any money, but they don't get to negotiate their contracts with the county. A clear majority of teachers want the school board to vote for collective bargaining. And you might be wondering, well, why would the board vote against collective bargaining? It's good for everyone, isn't it? Well, collective bargaining would mean that the school board loses some of their decision-making power. They lose some money, but is it really a loss if it's still going towards the schools? It gives the board less power to control their employees' every move. A vote no is a vote focused on power and money. Your job is to sit on this board and decide the fate of thousands of staff and students. It's your job to take care of this county, our community. And if you don't want your bus drivers, custodians, food service workers leaving, perhaps to go to the city schools where collective bargaining is almost guaranteed to pass and where teacher salaries are higher, then I suggest you vote yes on collective bargaining. As a high schooler, here I am at my very first school board meeting at the ripe old age of 14. What a life. Please, I am a 14-year-old. I'm a freshman in high school and I'm worried about this. Please, vote yes. Vote yes for my earth science teacher, Ms. Resett. She's here tonight. I love her so much. Please, vote yes for the lead teacher and IB coordinator at Community Lab School, Josh Flaherty. Vote yes for the custodian, the bus drivers, the school nurses and vote yes for every Albemarle County employee with a life and a family to support and take care of. Thank you.
The next speaker... Guys, I'm really, it's, we got speakers to get through. I appreciated the creativity when I said it the last time that then y'all cheered after I said the name, which that's better because at least then while they're walking up. The next speaker will be Margie Shepherd.
It's been a while. I'm Margie Shepherd. I'm retired from Henley Middle School. And there's an old joke that goes, "How many Virginians does it take to change a light bulb?" And the answer, of course, is 50, one to change the bulb and 49 to talk about how good the old one was. It could also be 50, but they have to wait until someone else changes it first. Or it could be 50, but they have to wait until for someone to tell them how to change it. Really, I don't know how you come up with the salaries for educators. I assume there are guidelines or metrics or projections, but in all the years I taught in Albemarle, I felt it felt like you all tried to find the lowest number you and the board of supervisors could get away with. One year in the 90s, when I was the AEA president, I pushed for bargaining for negotiations. So the administration gathered more administrators and board members and department chairs and we sat around a conference table and had meetings and looked at salary charts and maps and regulations and they called for a vote. A vote? Wait a minute, I said. You each represent a few people, but I represent 1,200 teachers. There was uncomfortable tittering all around and then they voted. It was a horrible moment when you realize that you have been cajoled as a child. We have been cajoled, humored, mollified, overruled and ignored. We just want the respect of being treated as equals in negotiation. I believe one thing that happened to us all through COVID is that we had a chance to look around to see how this could be done better, to see how it is done in most of the country and that is what we want. We're asking to get this process started. No, we don't know exactly how to start, but there are plenty of examples all over the state and all over the country and plenty of people who do know. And it's better than sitting around in the dark, waiting around for someone else to change the light bulb. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Shepherd. The next speaker is Mary Nacy.
Hi, I'm Mary Nacy. I'm a parent from the White Hall District. These are two of my four children. Seven hours a day, five days a week, they can be found in their Albemarle County Public Schools, Brownsville and Henley. They are learning during that time from amazing ACPS teachers and staff. These teachers know my children. They know their strengths and their struggles and they want my children and all of their students to thrive. Their work environment is my children's work environment. They know better than anyone what they need to cultivate a strong learning environment. I trust these teachers to advocate for my children. It's time to let them advocate for themselves. Please give them a seat at the table and please vote to approve the resolution for collective bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Nacy. The next speaker will be Irene Crone.
I think I have to do that. Good evening.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Haas. My name's Irene Crone. I'm a teacher, parent, and resident of the White Hall District of Albemarle County. I'm here to ask you to adopt the AEA resolution for collective bargaining. In a recent article about ACPS, in which we are ranked eighth in the state of Virginia, one of Phil Jeramida's comments was, "The secret is an emphasis on great teachers." I work with many of those great teachers, some of whom we are losing this year. Teachers who want resources and time to do our jobs well and to be compensated in a manner that allows us to live comfortably in the community where we work. There are many decisions to be made. I appreciate the recent actions of the superintendent and the board that raised our salaries and lowered our class sizes, but we are not there yet. I am well-supported at Broadus Wood, but I, like most teachers, always work more than my contract hours. I read an article recently that hit the mark. It said, "Teachers, please stop wearing your 60-hour work weeks like a badge of honor. You are perpetuating a system that takes advantage. Imagine a day when all teachers could leave the building at the end of their contract time without a bag of work. Please allow us to be active participants in negotiating our contracts and determining policies that benefit both staff and students. We are in the schools each day. We have much information to share with you regarding what works, what does not, what we need for ourselves and our students, and even what we don't need. Let us help attract and retain the best teachers for our students. We can do this together through collective bargaining." Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Crone. The next speaker will be Mr. Seaman.
Good evening. My name is Chris Seaman. I'm a resident of the White Hall District, and I'm the parent of two boys who attend Albemarle County Public Schools. I'm here tonight to speak in support of collective bargaining. Here in Albemarle County, we are fortunate to have incredibly talented, committed, and hard-working teachers and staff. They are the bedrock of our public education system. They are highly trained and compassionate people who have dedicated their careers to educating, caring for, preparing our students to go on to higher education, join the workforce, and be informed and engaged citizens and community members. No job is more important. The best way to support our teachers and staff is to grant them a seat at the table and accept their resolution for collective bargaining. At a time of rising inflation and a hot labor market, Albemarle teachers and staff are paid significantly below the statewide average. Nationally, almost a third of new teachers are compelled to take on a second job to make ends meet. But collective bargaining is about much more than just compensation. The last two years, the COVID pandemic, have placed unprecedented challenges and demands on our public schools and especially on our teachers and staff. There has been little time for professional development, and teacher burnout and exhaustion are major risks. The academic literature is clear. By improving compensation and working conditions, unionization will result in lower attrition and increases teacher quality. In addition, there is strong evidence that unionization results in increased academic performance and higher test scores. And finally, because teacher strikes are prohibited under Virginia law, there is no risk of interruption to the school year or to student progress if you grant their resolution. To support our teachers and staff, it is time for the school board to approve the resolution for collective bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Seaman. The next speaker will be Becca Saxon.
Hold on, I have props. Good evening. My name is Becca Saxon. I've been talking to you a lot recently, so tonight I'm going to show you something. This empty bucket represents the decision-making vacuum as it exists right now. These flowers are the students. Your goal is to keep them standing strong and tall and moving toward the sun. Okay, so this represents the decision-making that would happen if you were listening to the 1,452 of your employees who signed bargaining cards. Each block, there are 1,452 blocks in here. This is what happens to the flowers. They stand upright. So we've offered our best draft proposal of a resolution. We have offered to meet with you individually to discuss it. We have offered to set up a task force. We have offered to have our attorney speak to Ross Holden. Every single invitation we have given has been met with silence. Let me say that again. Every invitation has been met with silence. We get it. This is a huge shift in how we do things. The costs are not clear, but there are also costs to ignoring us. Can you honestly tell us that you think public education is thriving right now? Can you honestly tell us that you can confidently make decisions for this community with the processes that exist right now? That you will have enough drivers and food service workers next year? That you will have a teacher in every classroom? We're in a place where bold and courageous changes will have to occur to save our public schools. The staff know this? Do you?
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Saxon. The next speaker will be Josh Mound.
My name is Josh Mound. I'm a teacher in the district, and I live in the Rio District. I have my PhD in history and sociology from the University of Michigan, where my published research focused on how local educational finance impacts inequality. I picked Michigan for my PhD because graduate student instructors at Michigan are unionized. I know from personal experience that collective bargaining matters, and I'd like to make four brief points in support of ACS, ACPS employees' collective bargaining. First, collective bargaining rights are essential rights. Article 23 of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights supports the right to unionize. Likewise, when MLK was assassinated in Memphis, he was there supporting public sector workers who wanted to collectively bargain. Second, study after study shows that unions are most helpful to the most vulnerable workers. ACPS's goal is to recruit and retain a diverse workforce. Collective bargaining will help accomplish that and will reduce HR costs by limiting turnover. Third, while the separation between the school board and the county board poses complications, it's a common issue. For example, both unionized federal employees and unionized state employees in many parts of the country rely on legislatures to separately allocate money. The AEA is cognizant of this complexity and wants cooperative negotiations that will be fiscally beneficial to both the district and the county. Fourth and finally, future elections may radically change the school board's composition and imperil your accomplishments, such as the anti-racism initiative and the LGBT policy. Unless the AEA is empowered to protect such provisions in collective bargaining, there's nothing to stop future boards from firing teachers who, for example, teach a lesson on the history of the LGBT rights movement. For all these reasons, please approve collective bargaining for ACPS employees. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Mound. The second-to-last speaker will be Kayden Wright.
Oh, hey, y'all. That's my bestie right there. She's my cafeteria lady. Speaking of cafeteria, or I guess not speaking of, there's a bathroom somewhere in this building, right? So let's just imagine that people are vaping in the bathroom, hmm? Let's imagine you're an educational professional here when Lane High School was a thing, and your job is teaching people, but for some reason you're sent to go and patrol bathrooms to stop kids from vaping. Let's imagine that you're obligated to break up students from fighting, from fornicaating, from doing all sorts of crap that they shouldn't be at school, and then to almost spit in this wound that this school has put in you. You can't decide what you get paid. You have no say in what happens. How, how does that work? I'm confused. You know, I'm only 14, I'm a freshman, but I am genuinely confused how you can take these people who are the backbone of our school system, who have nurtured me and all of my friends since I joined the school, and tell them that they don't matter, that they have to sacrifice their food, their livelihoods, pretty much every aspect of their life to support their careers. How does that work? Can anyone answer? I didn't think so.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Wright, and coming back to give comment again. Thank you. The last speaker will be Amy Lauffer.
Hello, school board members and Dr. Haas. My name is Amy Lauffer, and I live in the Ravanna District. And as most of you know, I've been on a school board, and I'm a former teacher that also belonged to a union. And I can imagine how daunting all of this is. I know with the funding, and it's very complicated. But I think in all that you've done for the pandemic, I know it's been, and it's ongoing. And now we're shifting into another gear, which is collective bargaining. But here we are. You know, I know our community strongly supports public education, but the reality is our own governor is hosting a snitch line with the express purpose of attacking teachers and banning what they call divisive curriculum from our schools. And there's also a national coordinated effort to ban books and form on those that would teach divisive curriculum and also those that would help vulnerable LGBTQ+ children and to disrupt public teachers and staff day-to-day work. The reality for our public school teachers and administrators and even the school boards are that we are under attack. The teachers in Albemarle County have also surveyed this new landscape, and they are asking for your help to protect them from these outside forces. I know that there are still unanswered questions about how to do this, and those are valid concerns, but the truth is that our teachers need protection from forces that are not in our control, and you are in the position to support them in this effort, and I really believe you should. I also believe that in doing so, you will make our division even more attractive, even more attractive to qualified teachers, staff, and administrators, and will ultimately help the school board to continue to teach and educate our children in the best possible environment and will attract the best qualified professionals, which in the long run will benefit all of us. I know that you're all up to this challenge. You've done such amazing work. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
That was the last speaker. You can clap now if you'd like. Ms. Saxon, if you could grab your prop, please. Thank you. That concludes public comment. Chair Page.
Thank you, Vice Chair Coulson. We will now move to the first item on our agenda. Action on the public sector collective bargaining. And this will be in regards to the resolution that quite a few of our speakers mentioned that the board received in March of this year. So first, I'd like to have a motion on item 8-1.
On March 24th, 2022, the Albemarle Education Association presented the school board with a resolution under Virginia Code 40.1-57.2, seeking to institute public sector collective bargaining in the Albemarle County school boards. After review and consideration, I move that the school board not adapt the AEA resolution or otherwise authorize public service collective bargaining in the Albemarle County schools at this time.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Alcarro and seconded by Dr. Akoff that the board not adopt the resolution at this time. We are now ready for discussion on that motion, and we can either do it in alphabetical order or at any board member's discretion. Whoever would like to go first. All right, alphabetical order, Dr. Akoff.
Can we have questions first?
All right, question? Yeah, discussion questions.
Okay. Do we have an estimate of what a first year of this would be, a startup cost for doing this first year? I've not seen that. I mean, it obviously wasn't in this year's budget. Doc, Ms. Holden, do you?
Ms. Osborne, yes. This is based on some assumptions, but in order to administer public sector collective bargaining in the school division, we would need to establish an Office of Labor Relations. I would recommend at this juncture a director. It would require two people, a director and either a paralegal or an office assistant, two full-time employees. Calculated with benefits, that would be between $260,000 and $285,000. With respect to negotiating a collective bargaining agreement, we'd need a labor negotiator familiar with the process, or an attorney, one or the other. And I estimated that based on about 240 hours, 20 hours a week over a three-month period of time, and I estimate that to be between $84,000 and $108,000. We would need to put aside money for mediation in the event of impasses. Most mediators that I was able to find in the area, it's about $800 a day. 10 or 15 impasses that would require mediation, I estimated that between $8,000 and $12,000 for the year. And the AEA resolution requires the school board to pay whatever the costs are to oversee, conduct the union election, and I put a sum there of $25,000 for that effort. Total for the first year, $377,000 to approximately $430,000. Now, the labor relations negotiator consultant would be necessary just for the first year and every year that a collective bargaining agreement would be negotiated, say, once every three years. So that's not a every-year or annual expense, but it would be an expense for the first year of public sector collective bargaining.
And these people would be housed under our HR department?
Yes, the Office of Labor Relations would be housed in the Department of Human Resources.
And where are we in setting up our own HR department?
We're in that process. We'll have the HR department launched July 1st.
Are there other questions?
I, I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but I have some more.
Okay.
So my understanding is that cabinet members meet with the AEA two times a month. I don't know how long that's been going on, but what is happening that that is, that those meetings have been happening? How many cabinet members are involved? That feels like a lot of staff time that we've spent to reach the point where they still feel like they need collective bargaining. So can you give me an idea of what's been going on there?
So I would say I've been in the central office now for 11 years. When I first came, there was a monthly meeting. We typically would meet with the AEA president, and we also would meet with the AEA Uniserv representative. Sometimes there would be other members, and we call, it's called the AEA Exchange. It was called that at that time. And those meetings would take, take place monthly. Typically, the conversations would resolve around issues that employees are having at their work sites, and we would listen, try to arrive at resolutions to those issues or explain what there was in policy or state code that prohibited us from doing that. And usually, we could problem solve together, arrive at solutions that would work. During the pandemic, we, at the request of the AEA, we went to have a meeting twice a month. And so it's still a meeting with the president and also with the AEA Uniserv representative. The whole cabinet meets at that time because the questions can run the gamut from any department, the issues can run the gamut from any department, and they are multifaceted. So typically, what would happen is during the AEA meeting, they'll So typically, what would happen is during the AEA meeting, they'll generate questions. We get those in advance. Dr. Kaiser consults with the president of the AEA about the questions, just to clarify what they are and what they mean. And then during the meetings that we hold, we go through all of them and provide answers to the questions. We talk about resolutions to whatever the issues are. And honestly, throughout the process, we end the meeting each time with an understanding of, we're going to help from the school system perspective. We're going to, we're going to get things right. If it's an individual employee issue, we do prefer for those things to go through the management at the school level or to come through HR. And I think our HR department will, it has been and it will become more robust and better in getting, you know, through these issues and helping, but has in the past resolved them. So I feel that through the processes that we've had in place right now, we're the most communicative than we've ever been with the AEA. We get more information from them, more advocacy, more input than they've ever had.
Do we know really where Charlottesville is in this process? I'm not sure who.
Do you, Ms. Holden?
I don't know, Chair Page.
Yeah, do we have a sense of how many teachers and employees or members of the AEA? How much does representation, is it, how many members? I mean, I know a lot signed cards and that's great. And I think especially Vernon really did a lot of kicking, you know, butt to get that done.
Okay, please no comments from the audience. Thank you.
So for the perspective, Albemarle County Public Schools currently has 2,649 total employees, so about 2,700 employees. Of this total of employees, there are 550 employees who have AEA dues deducted from their pay. That represents 20% of our employees who are having AEA dues deducted from their pay. In our payroll system, we have 1,379 employees designated as teachers. Of these employees, 417 or 30% of that group have AEA dues deducted and 70% do not. We have 1,146 employees who are designated as classified staff. Of these employees, 100 or 9% of the group are having AEA dues deducted, 91% are not. We have 124 employees who are designated administrators. Of these employees, 33 or 27% of that group are having AEA dues deducted.
So 20%?
20% of ACPS employees are having AEA dues deducted from their pay.
Are those, that's the last of your questions, Ms. Osborne?
As I say, you can have more if you want. I have a question in response to some of the, Dr. Haas, in response to some of the emails we've got in the recent story. And I know in Public Comment, we talked about how we had an HR issue with our pay, which was not ideal. And I know it's tricky because we're not allowed to discuss someone's personnel issue. She can bring it up and discuss it if she wants, but we're not allowed to talk about it. But can you talk about how that process worked in terms of, like, was there, you know, did she have representation? Did we remediate the issue? What are we doing? How does the process work?
I would, I would call Dr. Kaiser to the podium. I can talk about it from a high level. I just want to be sure that if there are blanks that needed to be filled in, that she would be able to do that because while I oversee those procedures, I wasn't in the meetings with the personnel. So what I would say is that in the fall, we had teachers from a middle school let us know that we were not in compliance with the standards of accreditation that had been changed in 2018. And the standards stated that, it stated caps on numbers of students for, for teachers at secondary level, particularly middle school. And we had middle schools in the county that were running a schedule that completely overburdened electives teachers at that time. This was in the fall. Dr. Kaiser notified me to let me know that there was a grievance at that time. And from the very beginning of the process, and I'm the one that is responsible and I'm the one that works outside of the situation to direct what is to happen ultimately. The, my argument the entire time was to compensate the employees and also to provide relief. I know at the time that the principal of the school, the particular school, was trying to hire an electives teacher. Eventually, she was able to do that, which provided some relief. I directed Jay Thomas and Debbie Collins to work together to derive a formula for compensating teachers who had excessive students. And it was based largely on what we are currently already doing with high school teachers when they have an extra assignment, an extra classroom assignment. It is a generous formula that well compensates the teachers for the overages that they have. We applied those to the current, to the teachers in the current situation. And then my desire was for the HR department to research and identify teachers who had been overburdened in the past and not compensated. They went about doing that. They identified all the teachers that, where we had violated the standards of accreditation and they calculated the costs of providing that, providing the compensation for those teachers as far back as 2018. Some of those teachers do not work for Albemarle County schools anymore. We are in the process of reaching out to them so that they can be compensated. The next step was to do VRS creditable compensation because that's important. If they had been properly compensated in the past, they would have had that go into their VRS account towards retirement. And again, I directed my staff to calculate what the cost of that would be to reach out to the VRS to get it situated so that we could do that. The, my understanding from our legal counsel is that what slowed the process down on occasion was the AEA attorney reviewing the documents and then getting them back to us so that we could move forward. But throughout the entire process, we worked with those teachers. They're, they're getting compensated and we will also compensate the teachers that are in, that are in arrears on that. We still need to find out from the Virginia retirement system what the penalty is for making those deposits into the VRS accounts for those teachers. We'll have to, we'll have to take that as part of our costs in the process, but it is also my intent to do that. We will, we will be able to afford it. I have had conversations to make sure that we can, we can afford this cost and the cost, the ability to pay for it comes from lapse in salary throughout the year. We have more than enough salary lapse to be able to cover what we're going to need to be able to cover to do that. I feel it was a successful resolution and that if I were presented with a similar situation like that in the future, that's always the way that we, I approach those things. Did I leave anything out, Dr. Kaiser?
The only thing that I would add to that was the kind of collaboration, back and forth discussion.
Absolutely.
Between Ms. Saxon and Mr. Redding to land where we did with the teachers. We did some additional things. One of the, the initial recommendations was a four, three-tier system of pay. And in, in the conversations that went back and forth with the AEA representation, we went to a five-tier system and then the VRS piece as well. The, there was a request from them to push for the credible compensation for VRS. And, and that's when we did some additional research to see if that was a feasible thing and if we needed to do that. And indeed, that's, that is what we landed on and what we are doing going forward. We do have a, we have started paying these people who were in arrears. We have a few teachers that we realized that we did not pick up the first time through in our data and we are working on making sure that we rectify things with them as well.
The thing that I would just add, the final part is that we, all the middle schools are required to have schedules now that will not, where this will not occur moving forward. And annually, we will, typically, we would get superintendent's memos from the Virginia Department of Education highlighting changes of the standards of accreditation like this. There was not one, but that doesn't relieve or must the burden to annually review the standards of accreditation to ensure that we're in compliance with them, which we will do when we do the staffing meetings with the principals. We went through staffing meetings in February and March and part of the process was to do a check with the standards of accreditation on how they're staffing their schools. So we have quality control moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Are there other questions from the board members?
I don't know if I'm like allowed to ask this question.
Yes, Mr. Mason, right.
I'd like to know why y'all voted not to approve the collective bargaining.
That's a very good question. Each board member is going to explain his or her vote when it's time for a vote. So I think you'll get an answer to the question at that time.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have one final question. So one thing that when I was going through stuff, I recall, but I just want to check is the, I know we've done a teacher raise every year. I know I voted for that. In the last year, every year that I've been on the board, in the last year, how much of a raise has there been? If we include the bonuses and the, because you gave a number, but I don't want to say something that's inaccurate.
Let me just take a minute here. So this, this helps clarify a few things. One is the last time that the Virginia Department of Education produced data on the ranking of teacher salary for, for a school system across Virginia, ACPS ranked 27th when compared to the 132 school divisions listed in the VDOE report. That is in the top 20% of compensation for, for teachers in Virginia. During the court, now that was, that was based on a year when we did not do a compensation increase because we were heading directly into the pandemic. As you recall, the board approved, I believe, a 4% compensation increase and then the pandemic hit and we came back with a revised budget where we had to abandon a lot of the things that we were working on at that time. Going into this school year, 2122, we've had a mid-year, well, we began with a 5.2% pay increase in July of last summer. So it's 5.2. During the, during the school year in February, we just had a 4% pay increase for all employees. And then as of July 1st of this year, we will have another 6%, 6% pay increase for all employees. All totaled in a calendar year plus one day, that will be a 16.2% pay increase for teachers in Albemarle County. For classified staff, it'll be slightly less because prior to our HR department separating, we were still working in commonality with local government, which is traditionally given a lower pay increase for classified. Moving forward, our pay increases for our teachers and our classified staff will be exactly the same. Recently, we also adopted a $15 minimum wage with our employees. That was, the second part of that was interrupted by the pandemic, but we're able to completely do that moving forward in this year's budget. We had a $1,000 bonus for all of our employees during the school year and that doesn't factor into salary, but that was part of that. And for bus drivers and nurses, which were critical positions during the pandemic, we instituted a retention bonus of $2,500, which paid out monthly as, as they stayed with us. In the intent of that, I know that many employees felt like that was a reward that we put in place to, and not reward other employees. However, the goal was to retain employees and so we didn't just pay it out at one time. We paid it out monthly so that hopefully it helped to retain those employees that were critical.
So we still hear that our employees can't afford to live in Albemarle County. I know there was an HR report floating around in the last couple of meetings. Do you remember off the top of your head, or maybe Dr. Kaiser does? What is, what does our data say on that? And do we have any idea what our retention rate is?
Our retention rate? So I'll start with.
Those are two different things, sorry.
I'll start with employees living in our locality. 63% of our, all of our employees live in Albemarle County. That's compared to 40%, which was a, and a number quoted to me from the superintendent of Charlottesville City Schools in a recent presentation that we did to local realtors. 40% of Charlottesville employees live in the city. 13% of our employees live in Charlottesville, 6% in Greene, 6% in Flavanna, 2% in Augusta, 2% in Louisa, 1% Buckingham, 1% Orange and 1% Wayne's Row.
So it's basically 76% in our immediate area.
Right, and 2/3 of our employees live in Albemarle County and a third do not, roughly. In terms of retention, according to the National Center for Education Statistics, 8% of teachers leave the profession yearly and that actually leave the profession. 8% move to other schools. This brings the total annual turnover rate to 16%. While we do not yet have final numbers for teachers who will resign or retire at the end of this year, you will note that in our board packet under Personnel, we show the current numbers of resignations and retirements as well as the previous year totals. To answer the question for this year, we look only at what happened by the month of May for the past five years to get a sense of where things are better or worse. As of today, 74 of our teachers have resigned and 27 have retired. Some have done so prior to June 30th and some have indicated they will do so as of June 30th. This is a total of 101 teachers out of our current teacher workforce of 1,379. As of May, 7% of our teachers have indicated they are leaving. So that's 7%. Last year, it was 90 teachers by mid-May. In 2020, it was 89. In 2019, it was 115. And in 2018, it was 92. In terms of retention rates, our retention rate, we do not have one yet for 2122 because we haven't completed the fiscal year. However, our retention rate for 2021 was 88.1%. 1920, it was 87%. 1819, it was 88.8%. And 1718, it was 89.6%. So it always kind of rides around 88, 89%. So again, coming back to the Center for Education Statistics, the nation has a 16% turnover rate. That would mean an 84% retention rate. So ACPS teachers are outperforming the national average by 4% when it comes to remaining in their employment with ACPS.
Thank you, Dr. Haas.
Yes.
Are there any other questions from any other board members? If not, okay.
Well, sorry. This isn't a question, but I do want to, I don't know if the rest of the board knows this, but we heard the comment that Ernie's single invitation has been met with silence from the AEA. And I don't know if you guys know this, but I'm met with the AEA. So obviously, it was not a memorable occasion for them, even though I brought snacks and they brought a lawyer. Evidently, that was forgotten. But, and if you guys want to ask me how that went separately offline, I'll talk.
I did too.
Ms. Lee, also, ma'am?
Also, yes.
Okay, if no further comments or questions, we'll proceed with the vote. And Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll? And I do ask each board member to, in reference to Mr. Mason's questions and probably a lot of our audience, to give a reason.
Yeah, shouldn't we give our reasons in case?
Okay, well, we could give reasons first.
Can we read the motion again?
Okay. All right, well, we'll give reasons first for the vote. All right, well, we'll give reasons first for the vote, and then we'll take the vote. Mr. Mason.
I have a comment. I don't have a vote, but I do have a voice, and I'm not even like going to begin to pretend like I know all the ins and outs of collective bargaining or what the communication between the AEA and the division look like. But the people have spoken, and I feel like the most effective way to make, make change is to listen to them and not just listen and write messages or visit the schools, but actually take action upon what they're saying. And I think the people that are actually in the schools, working and doing the work that we're all speaking on, know best for that. So talk is cheap, I think. They deserve a seat at the table. I don't know what that would look like, but let the experts negotiate and figure that out, and that's what they're here to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. All right, so by popular opinion, then, it's been stated that we will explain our motives for the vote that's to come before we actually take the vote. So Dr. Akof, we'll let you start.
This is the challenge of being first in the alphabet. I cannot support the petition for collective bargaining of ACPS employees at this time. My reasons are several, but the central fact is that the state, the statute crafted by the General Assembly is unworkably vague. Collective bargaining of public employees, as you know, was illegal for nearly 50 years, and the infrastructure for collective bargaining is absent in both regulation and, and the Virginia statute authorizing collective bargaining only with local governments and school boards, notably no state employees. Lacking in the statute are such basic elements as a process for verifying signatures, how elections are to take place, what employees are subject, subject to collective bargain, bargaining, and many of the provisions that are the norm in other states that make collective bargaining work. As a result, rather than focusing on our students, which is my highest priority at this time, I fear a significant amount, excuse me-
We ask for a silence and respect, please. Thank you.
As a result, rather than focusing on our students, which is my highest priority at this time, I fear a significant amount of time and resources would be devoted to developing the collective bargaining infrastructure the General Assembly failed to do. Additionally, as is often the case with new and poorly drafted legislation, the first adopters are also likely to be embroiled in litigation and other challenges detracting from both our students and any meaningful efforts to support staff needs. A second reason is that this school board, as you know, lacks the legal authority to raise revenues. I understand that many have emphasized that the effort toward collective bargaining is not solely about money, but many of the changes sought would have a financial impact. The school board has annually advocated to both the Board of Supervisors and our state representatives for greater support for public education, and this year, we have managed to secure the largest raises for our employees in history. Many of the other issues raised by the petitioners also involved increased revenues, smaller class sizes, more time for planning. Albemarle County Public Schools already devotes 86% of its operating budget toward personnel. And without additional funding from the state or the BOS, we have little room to maneuver, and this is not even counting the cost of setting up a collective bargaining infrastructure. Both of my parents, as well as my stepmother, worked in public education. My father was a middle school teacher for more than 40 years, and I do have, although it's a bit rusty, an appreciation of the hard work and dedication that is required. And I absolutely support working more closely with our teachers and staff, but I cannot support this collective bargaining resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Akof. Ms. Dale Carrow.
Collective bargaining. This is a subject that I can embrace and, and I can believe in. But as Dr. Akof has said, there is, the legislature evidently had a pretty robust bill that they were working on and couldn't get it passed. And what they, what they did with this is to put out the 386-word bill that gives really no, well, there, there's no modern-day case law in Virginia on the subject of public sector collective bargaining. There's no labor relations type of entity that is, that provides oversight on elections, on other processes that make collective bargaining work in all of the states that have it. We don't have that here. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, you know, at the legislature level and across the state before, and infrastructure before effective public sector bargaining can really be launched. I think that there needs to be a commonality of structure and process for collective bargaining across the Commonwealth school boards. Otherwise, what we've got right now is the opportunity for 132 school divisions to set up 132 different ways to create collective bargaining. And that, to me, is going to be very, very messy, you know, throughout, because there needs to be the commonality so that there are structures in place. You know, I'm going to repeat what Dr. Akof said, that school boards are completely dependent on the federal governments, the state governments, and the county governments for their revenues. We don't have taxing authority in Virginia as, as school boards because, you know, and, and many other states do have that. So we can't really tie or bind, we don't have the authority to commit our Board of Supervisors to multi-year contracts, labor contracts. When the subject of the collective bargaining came up two years ago, you know, I was actually pretty interested in, in this. And then it became obvious that the new law was not going to be much help to, to school boards across the state. I felt strongly that our board should wait and see how other school boards handle this, school divisions handle this across the state operationally. We can then cherry pick the best ideas that are fair to everybody involved and avoid what were obvious but yet unforeseen pitfalls. I still feel that this is why I'm going to vote to not adopt the AEA resolution in public sector collective bargaining at this time, not yet. And I just want to say that my, my vote has nothing to do with AEA. They've done great work for as long as I've been on this board, and I've got tremendous respect for them.
Thank you, Ms. Dale Carrow. Ms. Carlson.
Yep, so I will start off so that you guys don't have to wait for my whole comments. I do not plan on supporting the resolution, so you know. I know nothing I'm going to say is going to convince you, convince you, obviously. I'm not trying to do that, but what I do want to do is assure you that I have done the work and done research to help formulate my opinion at this point. I can tell you that I've read the emails that you've sent, and I've sought answers or responses to things that you guys have brought up, if you've sent an email. I've looked at research. One of our public speakers today said that research is conclusive, that unions promote, I think he might have said student achievement, I'm not sure, but nothing I could find showed conclusive evidence one way or another, both for student success and for teacher satisfaction. I reviewed the anticipated budget, which we discussed in our session, and Ross provided an estimate. I reviewed the legislation that is in Virginia, along with other states, to see where we compare. Wisconsin is a good one to look at, to see the body of legislation they have that helps their, their lawmakers and decision makers guide the process. We do not have any of that. I listened to other board members who have more experience than I do in this. One of our board members, who's unfortunately not here tonight, has represented the AEA, and he had an opinion that he shared and information he shared, and I respected his I consulted with our superintendent and our lawyer, and I sought their recommendations. They both have a wealth of experience. Mr. Holden has served for the Department of Transportation, I believe, or in New York. New York, where unions were a thing, so he's got background in that, and we know Mr. Haas' background. I've consulted with other lawyers. I am a local government attorney. I actually attended a conference not three weeks ago where this was a preeminent topic that we were discussing. How do we implement these? What does it mean for our human resources departments? And I can tell you, it is not conclusive. It is fraught with uncertainty, and I wasn't convinced that I wanted to be on the fore, the foreground of crafting those things. I also consulted an HR attorney, I have many attorney friends, and she pointed out to me what the process would look like. I'm not saying it's not doable, but again, that evidence didn't convince me that we should pass a resolution as written without digging into it further. I also listened to public comment and looked at related claims that were made. One thing that particularly stood out to me was the teacher that had too many students. That was compelling for me. However, as we talked about here, something that stood out to me with that was that the teacher herself said that she had gotten an adequate resolution of the issue through her current representation with the AEA and her interactions with their department. So it wasn't a compelling reason for why we needed to act right now to get collective I also personally have experience with unions. I am a former teacher, and I taught in a student that had strong union support. It's Massachusetts. And the flip side of that was that charter schools flourished. I taught at a charter school that I didn't have union protection. It's actually what made me leave teaching. I was required to be in the school at 6:00 AM. I was not allowed to leave till 6:00 PM. I had to have a cell phone and had to be responsive to my students within 24 hours or I risked getting fired. That's what happened without a union in that state. So it's not that I'm anti-union at all. I can see what happens if protectioners, protections are not afforded. However, I don't see those same things being brought to our attention here in the same way. I'm hearing about a 16% raise. I know that we're here to support you. I'm not saying that collective bargaining is off the table, but again, I don't see in the balance of evidence why it needs to happen right now when there's all these uncertainties. And lastly, I talked to teachers. So my mom's a teacher, so I talked to her. My other lawyer, actually, at Charlottesville is a former Albemarle teacher who left the profession because he was unhappy. My trainer at the gym is a former Albemarle teacher who left the profession because he was unhappy in the 1990, 1990 to 2000. I talked to other teachers in the school. I was actually in Agner Hurt last week. So nothing I'm going to say is to convince you. It's just to say that I'm not taking it lightheartedly. I'm trying my best to make the decisions on the information that I have. That being said, on balance, at this moment, I do not support the resolution as presented. That is not the way the process typically works, and I don't think we should be doing it atypically. I do believe in the process of discussing, communicating, coming to some kind of resolution together that is presented, that would be more the way that I would be comfortable proceeding. So no, I do not support passing the resolution that you guys submitted. And I'm sure I missed things. I have a bunch of handwritten notes. I, I do want to assure you it wasn't like a done deal. I think all of you came. This is the first time I've seen this many people come. I appreciate it, and that's what I'm going to be voting tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Ms. Osborne. I'm sorry. Ms. Lee.
Sorry.
Ms. Lee.
Thank you. I also have a bunch of handwritten comments, so I might miss something and jump back in. I find myself quite conflicted about this, much more than I thought I would. I understand these concerns. I, I think that one thing that I understand today that I didn't understand maybe when I first started is how much we're all really trying to do what we think is right and how differently we can fall on those lines. So I, I do, I think that these are valid concerns. The statute is unstructured. We are in uncharted territory, but I'm starting to think that like we ran out of charting a couple of years ago, and we're just now catching up to that. So it's not structured. It does not provide a path forward. It's also true that creating our own infrastructure for this would be labor and resource intensive, and at least for the short term, I do think those resources would definitely eat into any salary increases we might be able to give to our staff. And it is also true that this resolution is not perfect. It's not what I would want to pass, and in fact, but in fact, many members have said it's a starting point, and I agree with Ms. Carlson that that's the way that you would do things, that that would be a starting point, and we could have treated it as such. We could still, who knows? And I also, I believe that at least for the most part, the division does deal in good faith, but that, to me, is not a compelling reason to vote against collective bargaining. A culture of good faith is hard to build and quite easy to dismantle, and I'm glad for what we're trying to do as a division, but I don't think a bad working environment is necessary for collective bargaining. So that's just my logic for that. So while I understand all these concerns, I fundamentally believe in collective bargaining, and so I will not be voting for that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Ms. Osborne.
I fundamentally believe in collective bargaining as well. However, I can't support collective bargaining at this time, most specifically due to the labor-intensive work of standing up HR department, trying to do this on top of it. For me, it's a not-now type thing.
Thank you. This has been a really difficult decision for me, too. Listening to all of the board members and the reasons why they oppose this have always been like in the forefront of my mind, too. And without going over all of them again, one of them was the possible cost that this might cost our division that might be unforeseen. And then the second one was that we have no guidelines from the state in setting up collective bargaining. But then, that was on one side. But then over on the other hand, I'm a former teacher here in Alamo County, and having the experience, I know how frustrating it can be at sometimes to be a teacher in the county. And I was a teacher quite a few years ago, before COVID appeared on the scene, before some of the political forces that's now within our state and nation started appearing on the scene, and the possible effect that some of those things could have on our teachers. And so even though I really do not support the resolution at all, I'm still going to vote against this motion because I really think that our teachers deserve to have collective bargaining. So I will be voting against this motion. So now we are ready, I think, for the vote unless any other member has any other comments.
Can we get the motion one more time?
Yes.
Just because the double negatives of the motion, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what we're voting for.
Right, to make sure that when you hear the motion being voted on, a yes vote does not mean that what it sounds like a yes vote is meaning. So Mr. Holden or either Ms. Johnston, could you please read the motion again?
The motion is to the school board not adopt the AEA resolution or otherwise authorize public sector collective bargaining in Albemarle County Public Schools at this time. So a yes vote would mean you are voting to not adopt the resolution or authorize collective bargaining.
All right, so all board members and all the audience aware of that. Okay, Dr. Akof.
Yes.
Ms. Lee? No. Mr. Carrow?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
No.
The motion carried.
The motion carries. All right. In light of the motion carrying tonight, we do have something else to think about. Even though the school board has not authorized public sector collective bargaining by Alamo County Public Schools at this time, the AEA is positioned that administration and staff must collaborate frequently and effectively, and the best entrance of the schoolchildren we serve is a valid one. That's a very valid point. We should increase, as a board, we should increase opportunities for the school board and administration to listen and learn and obtain thoughtful input and feedback from teachers in the classroom and classified staff who are vital in creating an educational environment. environment conducive to learning. For this reason, I'm asking for a motion that the board asks the superintendent to explore meaningful meet and confer options and other alternatives for mutual interaction between management and staff to be established by school board policy to provide staff a resonant voice in the operation of Alamo County Public Schools. We are asking that staff report backs to the school board with your recommendations within 90 days for further discussion and consideration. So I would like a motion to that effect to authorize our staff to investigate other alternatives.
I will make that motion. I move that the school board ask the superintendent to explore meet and confer options and other alternatives for mutual interaction between management and staff and report back with recommendations and teachers and report back with recommendations within 90 days.
Second.
It's been moved in second that our staff be authorized to investigate meet and confer and other possibilities of bargaining, other than collective bargaining, and report back to us in 90 days. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Moving now to our next item. Adopt fiscal year 2022-23 school operation fund budget. And this is Ms. Kumazawa that's going to present to us.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Maya Kumazawa, Director of Planning and Budget. I'm here this evening to facilitate the adoption of your FY23 school board budget. Before I begin, I just wanted to thank you all for your guidance to the school board and leadership staff, but also to our senior budget analyst, Christopher Harper, who came out tonight, as well as communication specialist Lauren Hunt. They've worked tirelessly behind the scenes and were vital in the development of the budget process. You've seen this slide many times. We're finally at the very bottom of the slide where you're adopting the budget. Thank you for all the work you've put in, and congratulations to get up to this point. Well, this isn't necessarily the end. We'll be coming back throughout mid-year budget amendments if we have new information, new revenues, and any other anticipated changes that will come before you after the start of the fiscal year. This is just the beginning. From the beginning, the funding request is aligned with the new strategic plan, Learning for All. The mission of that is working together as a team. We will end the predictive valley of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. We seek to build relationships with families and communities to ensure that every student succeeds. We will know every student. In addition, these three goals that are outlined here were sort of our scaffold. When we presented budget proposals and budget changes, they all align with these goals. So I thought I'd bring them up one more time. This table shows a summary of the changes that have been brought before you since the approved funding request in March. This is a summary version, but for the school fund and recurring changes, we are proposing a decrease of $1.3 million from the funding request. This includes increases in fuel maintenance supplies and utility costs, and most notably, the reason why it's negative is because we are restructuring the funding of a federal revenue stream for our IDEA program. In one-time changes, we're proposing an increase of $5.7 million when compared to the funding request, and this is due to a recommendation to use projected fund balance during the FY23 fiscal year. So I just want to highlight a few of the budget wins or the budget drivers of what's changing from FY22 to FY23. Again, this is not comprehensive. You're very familiar with it, but these are some of the biggest wins. One is the proposal for a compensation increase for all regular employees. A 4% salary increase, as it was discussed earlier, was implemented in February of this year. Currently, we're undergoing a compensation study, and the results of those compensation studies, those recommendations are going to come in the next couple of months. And when they do, we've earmarked some funds to address any further compensation changes that might be needed for certain positions throughout the year that may not be part of the across-the-board salary increase. In July, we have planned a 6% salary increase. So the budget impact is a 10.24% salary increase across the board. And as was discussed earlier, historically, if you look at the last 10 years, budget salary increases have averaged from 0 to 2% per year. Another notable achievement is the inclusion of a class size reduction proposal. This proposal reduces the class size staffing ratio by one student at all levels and adds over 30 FTEs division-wide. And then the last major budget win that I would put out there is we listened to staff and the community about the need for substitute teachers at our schools. So during the current year, we added one permanent substitute at every school. Next year, the budget supports the addition of one to four permanent substitutes staffed at every school, depending on the size of the school. This is a summary of total school fund expenditures in FY23. They equal $246.5 million, and as you can see in this pie chart, it shows you how those funds are being allocated. 71% of those funds are going directly towards instruction and accounts for $174.9 million. You can see how other categories are listed in relationship to the size of the school fund budget. I want to point out that since the funding request process, revenues and expenses have balanced, and we're ending with a proposed budget for you to adopt of $246.5 million in both revenues and expenses. I also wanted to summarize the changes in special revenue funds since the funding request was adopted. We're proposing an increase of $18.6 million when compared to the funding request, largely due to the FY23 appropriation of ARP grant revenues and the IDEA restructure that's moving from the school fund to special revenue funds. Similarly, special revenue funds budget balances between revenues and expenses at $39.4 million. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Page, to move forward with an action.
Thank you, Ms. Kumazawa, and thank you for all of your work for many, many months in presenting the budget to us and guiding us through this process. Thank you and the staff.
Yeah, you said congratulation to us, but I think you need to congratulate.
Right, yeah. You really deserved a congratulations. The motion is on the screen. Mr. Alcaro, will you?
Sure. I move to adopt the fiscal year 2022-23 school board budget of $246,458,034 for the school fund and $39,424,421 for special revenue funds.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Alcaro, second by Ms. Lee, that we adopt the school fund budget and the special revenues funds budget as shown. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. All right, Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carries. Thank you. So again, thank you so much, Ms. Kumazawa, and we really appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you, Ms. Kumazawa, for your leadership.
Our next item, update on high school redesign. Mr. Thomas is going to lead this portion of our meeting.
Good evening, board members. How are you?
Pretty good.
All right, good evening, board members. Along with my colleagues, Jamie Gellner and Katina Dudley, we're here this evening to share some updates with you regarding high school redesign. As a reminder, the high school facilities planning study was conducted as a study to best address capacity needs and future enrollment of Alamo County Public Schools. The final report was completed in December of 2017. The study includes concepts of how high school 2022, which is what we were calling the initiative back in 2015, can be implemented across the school divisions and county. The primary focus is to find ways to give every student access to opportunities to support their passion, whether that be in or out of a high school building. The findings from this study have been used to rethink how we envision high schools and Alamo County Public Schools, which led to our current work that includes the various components of high school redesign. Just a reminder of the timeline, back in 2015, we actually had a group of teachers, counselors, staff members, administrators that started gathering and talking about what would it look like to have different opportunities within our high school. We really focused in at the time around problem, passion, performance-based, project-based opportunities for students. And as you can see, it led to the study that was concluded in 2017, and we've really been working on a lot of components of high school redesign ever since. So as you can see, we have a lot of components of high school redesign that we've showed this actually slide to you guys before, and it is ever-evolving, constantly trying to create invitational environments to help all of our students to be the best students that they can be. So tonight, we are going to share some information on several components of high school redesign, and specifically, we're going to focus on scheduling, which would be a seven-plus-and-advisory period, high school cellphone procedures, and career learning communities. And we will be excited to be back in front of you in the fall to have further updates on these initiatives. So I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Gellner now.
Hi, it's good to see everyone tonight in person. My name is Jamie Gellner, and I'm the Division Program Evaluator. I'll be presenting on the next two projects. The first one is our strategy related to student scheduling under Goal One, Objective Two. The first goal of our strategic plan is thriving students. One of the ways we define this is through our second objective. Students will be given structures to ensure that academic time demands allow them adequate time to pursue interests, including enrichment activities, lifelong learner and career goals. Several years ago, our own high school students came to us about the state of their mental health, and we heard about that earlier from Kofi Mason. Their suggestions to improve academic mental health included removing weighted grades and capping the number of advanced placement classes a student can take. It was important for us to continue to hear from students about what would make their school experience better, so we've asked them both in the winter of 2019 and in the winter of 2022 what was important for them. To be able to have time to do during the school day, the percentages you see are responses of three or four, where four indicated the highest level of importance. Some ideas are emerging about what's important for students, including meeting with teachers, counselors, administrators, or mentors, working collaboratively or independently on schoolwork, or pursuing personal interests such as clubs, sports, or special electives. With all of this in mind, the strategic plan development team developed Strategy Three. ACPS will investigate the value of implementing a seven-academic-period day with one additional period for enrichment in high schools. Over the course of this school year, we are engaged in just that, investigating the value of a seven-plus-one schedule as it relates to the objective of improving students' academic mental health. In the fall, we heard from smaller groups of school leaders and teachers, as well as students who supported moving forward with a seven-plus-one schedule. This spring, a working group was created to develop some potential structures of a seven-plus-one schedule if a seven-plus-one schedule is implemented. And I'd like to publicly thank those teachers and administrators who've been serving and doing that work. The working group consists of 20 teachers and school administrators. We have met three times and will meet one more time before the end of the year. We're currently looking at all the data that we have, and each school working team is developing a draft recommendation to move forward. Our group will come together next week to decide which of the recommendations, each with distinct pros and cons, to send forward for the cabinet and other leadership to review and consider. We will refine the recommendation between now and October and bring the final thoughts back to the board in the fall. At the earliest, this would be in place in our high schools beginning in the 23-24 school year. Another project that we're currently working on is developing a standard operating procedure for cellphone use in high schools. Although this project is not tied to the high school redesign, it is tied to student mental health and our goal for thriving students. In tandem with embedding digital citizenship, we're creating an SOP around the appropriate use of cellphones in high school. It's a gradual step up from the middle schools away for the day policy, and we intend to enforce the current student conduct policy, JFC, which already states that cellphones should be away during instruction. An SOP for the use of cellphones in the high school supports Goal One, thriving students, and will help to teach students and staff about the balance and healthy use of technology for student success. Our working group consists of one administrator from each high school and myself and a staff member from the Department of Technology. Each high school administrator conducted focus groups with both students and staff at their high schools about what they would like to see changed in their classrooms as it relates to cellphone use. We already have a student conduct policy that states that students shall not use cellphones during instruction, but in practice, it's been a challenge to enforce. We use the feedback from staff and students to develop an SOP, and we're sending that draft SOP out this month in a survey to parents, families, students, and staff to collect feedback. We'll then update the SOP based on the survey responses and communicate the change via multiple avenues over the summer. When school starts in the fall, we will support the high school admin teams and the students with this change by providing a technology toolkit that includes our common sense media resources. One, I think Dr. Haas showed you earlier, about digital citizenship, this SOP, and other digital curriculum resources and training to support healthy and balanced technology use in the classroom for students and staff. Now I will turn it over to Katina Dudley, who will provide an update about our career learning communities.
Good evening, school board members. I'm Katina Dudley, and I'm here representing the Department of Instruction. I'm a lead coach for Science. So I'll be giving you a brief overview to specifically speak about the career learning communities that are set to launch in the fall of 2023. The vision of this work is aligned to our strategic plan. As we work towards our goals of thriving students, affirming and empowering communities in equitable and transformative resources, the career learning communities is developing pathways that are aligned to Virginia's career pathways, and our teams are working toward expanding extracurricular offerings based on student interest. As you can see, these strategies are aligned to Objective 1.3. The career learning community work groups are also focused on removing barriers in order to decrease the limits on participation in competitive programs. These work groups have also identified over 30 community partnerships that could be supportive to this work. These work groups have also identified over 30 community partnerships that could be supportive to this work. The purpose to this work? Career learning community teams are working to open opportunities to all students in order to break the traditional model that contributes to inequitable distribution of opportunities to our students. To leverage student interest in order to support success and rigorous content. And to prepare students for post-secondary experiences. The learning communities will emphasize knowledge, skills, and dispositions desired by colleges and employers. This spring, we have work groups that consist of over 40 middle and high school teachers that represent 10 of our buildings. These teams are working on researching cluster and pathways in order, clusters and pathways in order to learn more about the trends, occupations, and skills that are in demand for each pathway. The teams are currently working on developing three-year plans of studies that will indicate courses and learning experiences to support each of these clusters. The teams will continue working on these plans throughout the summer. And once we complete this task, we will begin curriculum design for the courses that will be offered in 2023. We also plan to spend time next summer, providing professional development for teachers on differentiation. Our career learning communities are designed as purposeful groupings of clusters around similar skill sets. And these are the career clusters that we currently have teacher teams working to develop. In order to engage our community in this work, we plan to provide opportunities for all stakeholders to give feedback and input. Teachers will share and discuss current plans of studies with their students before the end of this academic school year, and we will be able to get feedback from students regarding the communities that would be presented. Community partners will be invited to serve this summer in an advisory capacity in order to provide feedback and impact, feedback and input throughout this process. And then we plan to share updates with the administration at each school building so that they can keep their faculty aware of our progress. This last slide, this last slide includes the resources that are linked to our website. These resources just include research that we've been using and then some of the information that will help our community better understand the work behind the Career Learning Communities.
That's the last slide. We just wanted the opportunity to continue to put information in front of you in regards to high school redesign as we're working through different components and getting feedback, and especially the ones that are aligning to our strategic plan. So if you guys have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them for you.
I have one, at least. Are you going to, I love learning career clusters. How are you going to assess? How many students want to go in which direction? I mean, if you're going to, if we're going to launch it in 2023, in terms of staffing, in terms of maybe clustering them at different locations across our schools, how is that? How is that going to work?
Great question. So we have a yearly process that kind of aligns with everything, from staffing to hiring. And that begins in November. In November, right, usually a little bit before, a little bit after Thanksgiving, they start opening registration for students. So we open it that early, so the kids can start putting in and meeting with their counselors, meeting with their teachers, their families having conversations about what interests that they may have as far as classes they want to take. They start scheduling that. The counselor then sits down with them to make sure that they're still in alignment with what they need. So that happens in November, December, January. We kind of try to lock things in by the end of January, which then starts to align with us getting the numbers for the next school year for hiring of staff members. Is that what you were asking?
Yes, but my underlying question is always capital, and we are building a new high school center somewhere, I mean, across from Monticello. And so my question, of course, is, how are we going to distribute? And maybe we don't know yet, but how does this mesh with that design model that we have approved?
Yeah, I think that's some of the things we'll come back to in the fall and go a little bit deeper into.
Fair enough.
I have a couple of questions about the seven-plus-one. As you know, I know we've had this discussion before. First, what is enrichment? It says seven-plus-one for enrichment. So what does that entail?
That's one of the things our working group is kind of talking through right now and getting more input about what that might look like. And each one of our comprehensive schools, plus the Lab School and K-Tech Center One and the Virtual School are all working together to bring back different recommendations. So we'll have a lot of different ideas that we'll be looking at next week and kind of fleshing those out. So enrichment right now to us kind of means a lot of different things, to be quite honest with you. And so we'll have more details in the fall.
Is there even like a ballpark of what that word could mean?
I think I can share a little bit, because when I was principal at Alamo High School for three years while I was there, we actually ran a seven-plus-one schedule. We didn't call it that. We called it a straight eight. And it was actually, came up from a teacher named Teresa Tyler, who put it out there and really got a lot of popular support around it. So the plus-one served more than one goal. And Jono, you might remember when we visited the Thomas Jefferson School in Northern Virginia, they had a seven-plus-one schedule. So every, what happens is during one period of the day, all teachers are assigned students at an equal weight. So it's all hands on deck. So every student reports to a teacher. When we got good at it, we were hand-scheduling students to be with teachers where they might need extra time and support already. Students can use that time in a variety of ways. We broke it in two parts. They can, or at that time, they could use it as a study hall, so pretty much eliminated students taking extra study halls. They could use it to get a pass, like if I needed to see Mr. Page for science help, he would give me a pass the day before. I would show it to my teacher and go to see him during that time, so I could get extra help from him. But also, we realized that for many, many students, they may not need extra time and support every time. So what we did is we built out a schedule for that period, and it included a robust schedule of club meetings. Every, every fall, we surveyed all the students. We asked them, what kind of clubs would you like to have at the school? The students would say what kind of clubs they wanted. It was things ranging from, back at the time, this kind of novel, to have a video game club, and we had one. I myself sponsored a Risk Club, you know, the board game Risk. We had several students that would come play Risk with me during Period Eight. Study groups would meet, a lot of AP class study groups would meet during that time because they could do it during that time without sacrificing out-of-school activities, like trying to meet at Starbucks at seven in the morning, which they used to have to do. But the clubs were the, there were service clubs that were very robust. At one time, we had 300 students in the Key Club at Alamo High School, and now it's down to about 70 students in it because they don't have that period anymore where they can go and meet. Band students would often flock to the band room because, or if you were in the marching band, but you couldn't be a band student because of your schedule, you could go practice during that time with your peers. So all those enrichment opportunities were things that students really wanted to do to pursue something interesting to them in the library or with their different teachers that they just really couldn't do during the school, during the school schedule or outside the school schedule because they wouldn't have a ride home or a ride to get to school early in the morning. We had a lot of clubs at that time. There was a teacher that retired. I know, I know I'm going down memory lane, but his name was Steve Fouts, and he was in charge of the student council. And they had dozens and dozens of clubs every year that the kids just really enjoyed being in. And that's a great way to offer enrichment for kids.
So that sort of piggybacks onto my next question, because I've gotten a lot of feedback from both parents and teachers about losing one class period and what that means for electives, especially arts electives. Is there, is that a part of this discussion? I know that the state requirements for advanced diplomas kind of hamstring us a little bit, right? Because of the world language requirement. But is, does that, is there a discussion about how the arts would be affected by that?
There is, and in our working group, we have elective teachers from each of the high schools that are having some voice. We are also looking at other data about how our students are currently using the time, like how many are currently using study halls or taking electives, and all of those things are being considered. And we'll be listed in kind of the pros and cons of the schedules that are presented.
One other note is that because you listed the surveys on the last page, I did go to the survey about the last secondary check-in, I think it was, and it talks about the seven-plus-one schedule. And I know that I'm talking about this a lot. I get a ton of feedback about the seven-plus-one. And it seemed that, well, my first note is, obviously, we don't have it up to look at, but the question around seven-plus-one seemed a little skewed because it was like a one-to-four scale, and one was worsen, two was neutral, and then there were two improvement questions, two improvement answers. So it did seem to skew the data a little bit. So that was, I didn't love that.
Yeah, that's why I took the survey and switched it to different ones. We did have a little bit different questionings in the two years we asked the surveys.
Okay, I thought I was looking at the most recent one. It was the one at the top, so it seemed that it was.
I think there was a four-point scale, and in the earlier one, we did use a five-point scale.
Okay. So then you moved to the one that was more skewed, it seems like, it sounds like?
Yes, I think, I think you're saying it correct, yes.
Okay.
From what I remember.
So that does not, that doesn't encourage me. So, but so I just, I want to make sure that, you know, if you're using that student mental health survey data, that it's clear what it shows. And then, let's see. Yeah, I mean, the major concern for me is just the electives and particularly the arts electives.
I have a couple of questions, one of which is, under seven-plus-one, how many classes will teachers be expected to teach?
So in a seven-plus-one, that's why I call it seven-plus advisory. So right now, we have eight classes. It would still be eight blocks, four in one day, four in the next. Right now, teachers teach three on one day, three on the next, which is six. So now they would have three on one day, two on the other day, which is five, and the advisory, which still would be six. But that sixth one, again, is not the graded class that they would have, that they have now in their sixth. Does that make sense?
So it's five-plus advisory?
It'd be five-plus advisory versus six, what they have now. And right now, they actually have six, and all three schools run a 40-minute time, 40, 45-minute time of intervention enrichment throughout the day, every day. So right now, they have six plus a half-period like that. So this would give them a longer time in that, as Matt was saying, that eighth period. It'd give time during the day where it's structured and reduce a little stress off the teachers and the amount of classes they're doing to be able to help kids, support kids in the clubs and the activities that they're struggling, their classes they're struggling in, in order to enrich students who are looking for something different, like we were talking about with AP or Do and Roll.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
And Katina, can you share what is the current status with the community partners you were talking about? Or maybe share with us offline, who some of these people are?
By names?
Well, I mean, it's great to know.
I can think of some of the names. In February, we had a meeting on February 18th, and at that meeting, we had, I think, 15 community partners. The purpose of that meeting to bring in those community partners was just to look at what are they seeing as trends for things that we should be thinking about for teaching our students? What are some of the knowledge and the skills that they would need? We had CBIQ represented. We had the University of Virginia represented. We had local government represented for environmental. That's just real quick. Our newest list, we actually had our teacher teams in April develop that list. So we asked them at the very end of the day, we want to bring community partners in to give feedback and input on this process. So who would be some of these people? So we have a list of over 30. What's been kind of neat about that is people have heard about this list, so we've also had since then, other people reach out that want to support the work as well. And I would say that many of our larger industries here in Charlottesville are being represented on that list, which I could share with you at any point. But I would say that that list will likely grow as we continue to move forward this summer in this work.
That's great. That really clarifies, because I was a little confused in terms of where the community partners were, and now that's very clear. Thank you.
Yeah, and they're all local around here.
I had a quick question about, or maybe it's not quick, but I had a question about the freshman advisory, and if we've done a review or plan, a program review of that. I think it's been a few years now where it's been in effect. I was kind of struck by the survey where, you know, it's only 30% of students even put it on there. And then when you click the survey link, also that was not looking very favorable for.
Yeah, it's kind of funny, because like parts of the survey say the kids are wanting something like this, and then, and then when you ask specifically about the freshman seminar, you're getting some mixed results on there.
I've also had constituent feedback about.
Yeah, me too, yeah.
And I think we have too, but I think also I could point out, I don't want to name names in front of everybody, but there's some people who have really owned that freshman seminar program and made a huge difference for kids. I mean, it's supposed to be an advisory opportunity to build a relationship with kids, to be there to be a mentor for them. And if they're following the curriculum that we put out in form and building those relationships with kids and helping the kids see those opportunities, I think that's where we're getting the better results. So I think we have to do a better job of continually doing some professional development and having our administrators in some of those classes, making sure they're following the curriculum. Because a lot of times, the complaints I hear when we sit down and look at it, they're not following the freshman seminar curriculum that we put forward to be part of that advisory. So I think we've got some work to do. Now, having said that, one of the things that we said we'd do is when we hit the four-year mark, is to, is to do what you're saying, do kind of an analysis of it. And the feedback we've gotten is, is there a way, and this is what we're looking to do for next year, take that freshman seminar, which in the seven-plus advisory would be the advisory. So it wouldn't be one of your seven, it would be the advisory. But in addition to that, taking a look at it and saying, all right, what about if we did, broke that 90-minute into two 45-minute sections? Where the first 45 minutes, you're really working on the socio-emotional skills, that, the help piece, the advisory piece, and the other half of that is kind of that build-in, study hall, enrichment intervention, giving the child whatever they need. So we have some teachers that are putting that together right now. I'll be working on that through the summer for us as well.
So do, does every teacher have to teach a freshman seminar? I mean, how does that work? Because that.
Ideally.
That social-emotional learning aspect of teaching, that's not everybody's cup of tea. You know, that'd be like putting me in to teach math, you know, and.
But it should, I mean, it should be, Alan, is what I would say. I mean, it's our job to build relationships with kids in the classroom, in the school buildings, in these offices. And that's a big part of socio-emotional learning is what you're doing. When we bring our kids to safe, our number one goal, or I could speak for me. My number one goal has always been the safety of kids emotionally and physically. One A is the education part, but that education part isn't going to happen without building those relationships and having that foundation. So that's where I was talking about the professional development. Some teachers who maybe aren't as comfortable with some of these pieces, how can we do more to help support them to build out their foundation? Because when you look at CASL and other groups and organization, they'll say teaching socio-emotional in an isolated area is not the best. It's a good start, but not the best. Ideally, you want that to spread to all your classes. The issue we run into is exactly what you're saying, somebody who maybe is not as comfortable with that. So this is our first prelude to build that advisory and that support to try to help them get to that point, so.
One of my main concerns is that the learning communities will only reach a certain demographic of people. Is there anything that y'all can like specifically say to address that concern about how not only you're opening access to all, which is something that you emphasize a lot, but like don't give clear details on how, but how you're going to plan to retain that success for all students?
Yeah, Kofi, that's a great question, because I think that's what we saw with our academies and one of the reasons that we, or at least I'll speak for the academy that I was a part of at Alamo High School. We didn't have the diversity, and we don't have the diversity at Alamo High School in the Mesa program. And so a couple of things we've started to do before we even hit the Career Learning Communities is we started to say, what are the barriers that we're putting in place to prevent kids from wanting to go in there or allowing somebody to go in to experience something? We had application processes. We limited the enrollment of people that were allowed to come in. I mean, I think at first it was 15. We increased it like 75 each year. So we removed some of those barriers. And it's like, if you are interested in being in this program, you, I, anyone should have a right to be able to do that. So that was one of the first things we did. Then we started looking to say, all right, how can we align these to state and national career learning clusters to open up more opportunities? As Dr. Akoff was speaking a second ago about the centers. Well, we already have a one center. It's really K-Tech, right? And then we started our Center One, which Mike Kratik has been leading. And both Stephanie, over. And both, both Stephanie over at K-Tech and Mike at Center One have really done a great job of working with our school counselors, with our buildings, to make sure they're promoting the opportunities. And one of the things we're starting to see is a pretty significant rise in the number of kids who are interested in going to Center One, who are going to K-Tech. Mr. Kradek runs those numbers every year, and as they're, as students are registering, he's able to see those numbers, they're emulating what our demographics are in the school system. So we are seeing the kids are going there. So it's one of those, if we build it, if we advertise it, and we build it around, because a lot of these learning communities we're building out are built from the data that we've been doing with kids when we were using programs like Naviance and getting feedback about what you, might you be interested in? And then still, then trying to find out the kids' aptitudes as well, what, what might you be good at? And give kids opportunities to explore in high school. And it should be for all kids. And I think that's how we break down some of those barriers so that this program isn't exclusive of some, some of our demographics of students. So that's, that's some of the things we're doing, and, and that's highlighted, I think, by the work that we're doing at K-Tech, by the work we're doing at Center One. And you can see those numbers are much different than, than, at least, again, I'll speak for when I was principal at Abmar High School, our Mesa program.
Now, currently a student at Mesa, I like just don't see those numbers being that different in the retention side of things. Like I just still hear a lot of talk about opening the doors, breaking down the barriers, but I don't see the success that you say you would, thriving students, I don't see that happening. And I still hear a lot of talk just about.
I agree with you at Abmar High School for the Mesa program, I agree.
For other programs as well, so.
I can add one other thing. I think one thing that you're also seeing in common with K-Tech and Center One is those programs are ten through twelve, and students are in the high school and they're in small groups hearing about these programs. When we would go to middle schools and we would present about the different opportunities, we were talking to two and three hundred kids at a time. And the kids that were really having the access were the kids whose parents were talking to them at home some too. I do think that the difference in these programs moving from nine to twelve to ten to twelve, and teachers being able to talk to students in small groups, will help students even thinking about their future interests in these opportunities. I'm also really excited that we're also expanding these broader than STEM. We had a lot of students that were in STEM programs that weren't really interested in STEM programs, and they, we've had people begging for more opportunities for many years since we started this, with the academy model. But I do think we're going to have structures in place so that students in ninth grade are being spoken to and like doing these assessments in small groups and being able to explore together with their teachers.
Ms. Dudley, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have one question about the partners. Are you able to find partners for each pathway, or are there any that's a problem?
Let me let you know about that. We had a list for, so the teachers created a list for each of our clusters at our last meeting, but we don't necessarily have a yes from everyone. So I'd be happy to report back to you if you have some ideas for us.
Dr. Kade?
I know two years ago, when we were talking about Portrait of a Graduate 2022, a key component of that was in making sure that all of our juniors or seniors had an internship or community-based project or some independent thing. How does that, how is that working? Are you, are the, how is that working and how is that working? Are any of the partners you're talking with, Ms. Dudley? Also, I know UVA is, but avenues for such activities for our students?
Yeah, I was actually at a chamber meeting of, hmm, two weeks ago, up at the Research Park, and Northrop Brumman. So our students don't necessarily go into Northrop Brumman and put their entire time as an internship. So some of the models we've seen, our students spend a hundred and forty hours in a position, completing an internship. But what Northrop Brumman does is they provide a mentor to students and they assign students research projects, and then students engage in the research project. And they have that mentor that's going back and forth with them through that mentorship the entire time. What I loved about him sharing this project was many other people that were sitting on the panel were really excited to hear more about that. And so just thinking about other ways that students can engage in work-based learning opportunities. They don't always have to be an internship where you go consistently weekly, they could be lots of different, they could look a lot of different ways, and the state puts out many different opportunities. We have shared what those look like with our teachers that are building the three-year learning plans, and so they're considering some different opportunities for what they might look like. And we, and I will also add something that we really want to be very strategic about is that we want these work-based learning opportunities for all of our students, not just students in the career learning communities. And so that's something, and the strategic plan, that's a goal that we have for all of our students.
That's pretty much where I was going, is that from, by my calculation, we've got about two thousand juniors and seniors, and thirty partners seems inadequate. I mean, so we need to do, do, do a more robust job finding, helping students find those opportunities. I mean, we always have people, you know, both parents work at UVA Medical Center and they get a great internship, but we have other students that don't have those connections, and we need to have a portfolio of partner or, or opportunities. And I mean, do we know, someone must know or can find out, how many students, how many students take advantage of an internship now? So, so we know how far we have to go to make it a more robust program.
And it's a great, great question, Dr. Akoff. So if anyone out there is listening, we would love to partner with you, give us a call. But the, it's not just internships in the traditional sense you're going at, it's also the work experiences. So one of the things we started at Abmar High School ten years ago was the Arts and Letters Pathway. And built in in that is very similar to the career learning communities, where we want kids to go out in job shadow or get experiences, ten hours, five hours, just to see what's out there and something they may be interested in. So a lot of our partnerships are like that as well. I do not have the answer to your question off the top of my head, but I can easily get it. We can run the numbers from the school and see who's actually signed up for an internship, formally and informally. We have to check off the box on kids for graduation with work experiences. So we can get a lot of that data from you as well. And, and so, yes, like somebody like UVA, which is huge and big, or Martha Jefferson could be great partners to be able to, to have some of our kids. But also, what about a kid who's just, I want to be a farmer? Sometimes it's a matter of matching up individual needs. And so in our three high schools, we have what's called a career counselor. And that's one of the jobs that they're tasked with, is really working with these work experiences, helping find the partners for that. We also have a position that's a working community-based learning coordinator position that we've just interviewed and hired for.
Oh, good. I knew that that was, I knew that that was open, but.
So we're really excited about that person stepping in too, and really helping us build up those partnerships. So we're always looking to add more people. And again, it could be somebody who just has an opportunity for one or two kids a year, it could be someone as big as Martha Jefferson or UVA who takes our children as well, and anything in between.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Where are these learning communities going to be located and like what would transportation look like for getting there if they're different than a students-based school?
Yeah, so the learning communities, we'll come back in the fall and talk about that. Transportation is currently provided and it'll continue to be provided. One of the differences you'll see with the career learning communities, unlike Mesa, Hamsa, the ESA program right now, is you don't have to give up your base school identity. And that's something we've heard over and over and over from kids and families. I went through elementary, middle school with, with me and Katrina, we're friends, we're in the school, but now all of a sudden, I've got to leave Western to go over to Abmar or to Monticello. So our, as we build out the career learning communities, that will be every other day. So one day you'll be in your base school, one day you'll be in career learning communities. And again, you don't have to be a part of a career learning community, it's a choice, if, if somebody's interested in pursuing that opportunity. But we will provide transportation as we do right now.
I have a comment, not a question.
Okay, comment?
A comment, because it's kind of related. I was just going to say, a big, I don't have a high schooler yet, in fact, my two boys are right there, trying to catch them at break before they go. You guys aren't in high school, are you?
We can get you that real quick.
One thing, though, that I've heard that's a big difference between public and private schools is the counseling that you get towards your career and your college applications. And I'm just putting in something now as we anticipate future budgets, that's something personally I would be interested in seeing expansion. So when I hear there's one counselor at a school who's a big high school, who's helping kids kind of navigate what that looks like, I feel like that's a gap that we're not currently, a need that we're not currently meeting with a lot of our students, giving them that kind of service to help them prepare for life after high school.
Yeah, and that is one of the jobs we're working with, our, our current counselors that are not the career counselors on continuum, that's part of them staying with kids for four years, is trying to build that relationship and understand what you're interested in, understand our programs and try to help, help make you aware of those. So we're working on that as well, but, but, but thank you for your interest in wanting to continue, and I think it's a huge part. We also have programs that we use currently, Naviance, Soon to Be School Links, that helps kids understand the opportunities that are out there in the world. I mean, I'll, I'll just be real, when I was in high school, I didn't know what was out there when I left, I just didn't. And so you just get lucky in a different path that we went in, and, and hopefully, we can do a better job for our kids here instead of just having them be lucky, have them be educated, understand what their aptitude is, what their interest is, and what pathways they want to pursue, and that's, that's where our job will be to try to match those up, so, but thank you for wanting to increase that.
So just a, just a quick note, did you have a question, Mr. Page?
No.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the amazing work that Jay and Katina and Jamie are doing with the teacher teams that are coming together, because this is all, you may not, you may, may not remember, but this is all based on field trips that board members took many, many years ago, back when we were getting involved with high school redesign. I think Graham and Kate visited either Hampton or Newbury News, where they had the high school, they had the wall-to-wall academies, was it, who was that with you, Kate?
It wasn't a, it was not a site visit, it was a conference.
So you could see the, the wall-to-wall.
Right.
We, we don't have a multimillion-dollar grant from the Ford company to do that because of our demographics don't, we keep, we don't.
And they had a gazillion partners.
So we're building it from the ground up here in, in Almar County. And also, the, the other things we learned from board members that took field trips and started working on that and putting it together. And it's been really a long-time project, but each year, we make more progress on it, and ultimately, the goal will be that as students are finishing up their ninth grade year, that they really have an idea of something fun that they want to pursue in terms of a career or an occupation that will help keep them engaged with high school. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I just had one other comment.
All right, one more comment?
I just wanted to, and this is a strict comment, I, I wanted to really support the work that we're doing around the cell phone use, because I just, I really think that that's important, both to support teachers and students. So thank you very much for that.
I know the teachers will appreciate that, too.
So we'll look forward to your update in the fall. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll now take a ten-minute break. We'll now take a 10-minute break.
I'm not sure I can straighten myself out.
Okay, our 10-minute break is over, and we will now move to summer learning. Ms. Kastner.
Good evening, Chairman Page and members of the school board. It's nice to see all of you this evening. I'm Michelle Kastner, Director of Elementary Schools, and I'm just going to provide updates this evening regarding our summer learning plans. And as you know, everything we do is aligned to our strategic plan. Our goal for summer learning is to offer students the opportunity to master grade level standards, the guaranteed viable curriculum. Summer learning is typically designed for students who are not reading or doing math on grade level yet. It will also allow students to continue their social, emotional development in academic and social settings. And it provides students with opportunities to work in problem and project-based learning through inventions. And our goal, as always, is to keep learning engaging and fun. In January, our deputy superintendent, Debbie Collins, created two committees, an oversight committee and a summer school steering committee, which included principals. The summer school steering committee helped to reset our purpose and logistics, and then the committee made recommendations to our oversight team in February. So the committee landed on the dates from July 5th to July 28th. It's usually a four-day week, except for the first week, which is Tuesday through Thursday. The summer learning plan was then rolled out to principals in March, and currently, principals are still in the process of hiring, but that's going pretty well. And the division will provide professional learning for teachers in late May and early June. And as of today, we have invited 1,672 elementary students, 799 middle schoolers will attend, and we anticipate inviting about 160 high school students who have not yet completed their coursework. All special education students have been invited to summer program, programming, either through general education, summer learning, or through extended school year IEP services. Preschool students were invited to participate with their preschool peers, and then preschool special education students were invited to participate with their peers or in a special program outside of the division. Preschool and special education are in these numbers, and we also anticipate 63 special education students involved in extended school year IEP services. Another note I wanted to point out is that we will have a special program for our ESAL students in high school, at Almar High School, for grades nine through 12. And we anticipate at least 40 of our ESAL students with a really strong focus on language acquisition. We're excited about the numbers, and we wanted to point out that if you see the numbers compared to 2019, that's just, I think, shows how many students we're welcoming into our school system this summer. And I just want to point out that summer school is always very fun and engaging, and I have great confidence that it'll go very successfully. But I just wanted to open it to see if you had any questions for me tonight. I'm assuming we provide bus transportation?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
How many sites will the elementary school program be offered at?
So, we only have, I, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I have it in my brain. We have a couple sites that are combined, Out West, we have a couple, and then Highly Made combines with three schools. But for the most part, all of our schools will have children in their buildings. And the other bonus is that we will have parks and rec available in the afternoons, available to all of our younger children in elementary school, which I think will create a smooth transition for many of our families.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I think this was covered at a previous meeting, but I just wanted to be sure. We had that issue with the special education students last year.
Right.
Do, did we invite them in this year?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
How has, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How did it work last year for students catching up to grade level math? I mean, I guess program evaluation. Dr. Akoff, that's always our goal. We always have a tremendous focus on reading and math during summer school. We make it extremely engaging. And I think we will be able to tell probably in the spring when we're looking at assessments along the way. It's hard to give that answer tonight, but that's always our focus. And I did visit every site last summer, and students were happy and so glad to be there, and they were highly engaged in reading and mathematics in every building. So I think that's always our main focus. I know, I'm hogging it. I know we also, as a school division, and my numbers may be off, had about 300 newcomers, maybe, over the course of the year. Have we sent out special invitations to that group? I'm sure they're included in all the invitations with the elementary schools, Ms. Collins. She's going to correct my numbers, I know.
Good evening, I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent. Those 40 students of the ESAL that we've put together a special program are all newcomers.
Okay.
Because it's one of the ways we're trying to think about preparing them for their courses they would take
Right.
in the fall by propping up their English.
Thank you.
Right. And then all the elementary newcomers would be naturally invited to the summer school program?
I saw on this particular chart that there's only 4% of the students from high school are being invited. That seems like a low number compared to the 27% and the, and the other two. Are they really that far advanced in terms of getting hit in grade level?
The 160 high school students are students that we anticipate will not complete coursework at, by the end of the school year. So they will come back in June and finish up their coursework.
Got it, okay. Thank you. That's still a low number. I mean, that's, that's pretty impressive.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
You said this is a morning opportunity, so will, like, school breakfast be provided for students?
Yes, yes.
Good question.
I guess I just want, this isn't a question, but a clarification. So the high school is kind of the traditional summer school that we've always offered. If you failed a class, you, or you're not going to pass a class, you get to go to, you go to some, you get to go, get the privilege of going to summer school. But we're expanding it for elementary and middle. Like, this is more to hit the opportunity for learning recovery, right, or like
Exactly.
extra enrichment options?
Exactly.
Okay.
It's learning recovery.
The, you know, the numbers for the elementary and middle school are based on assessment data.
Yep.
And that's not something we've done in the past. This is like new.
Well, it's, they've, they've done it in the past. It's just so many more students need extra time and support that they've expanded
Okay.
based on the students needing help. And it's with the middle school also, this, this is a, an additional program that we're running this year. So that is based on the data where, where the students were at largely a mid-year review, like, where were they in terms of their progress? Because they needed to start doing the invites, you know, right after that.
These are all students that have been in some kind of intervention setting during the school year. So they, as Dr. Hall said, are typically students that have been identified at that mid-year to do, to get into this invitation.
And then with the high school students, so this is summer school so they can complete classes. We're trying to avoid the, the failure part.
Right.
So it's like, you're not finished yet, you need to complete this particular standard, you need to complete these assignments to show that you've learned what you're, you're supposed to learn for this class. So let's get you in and, and help you get finished up. And we still are offering new classes in the summer. So things like, you know, we, we talked a little bit about, about virtual PE and
Health and PE.
you know, actual PE and some of the other classes
Personal finance.
that have been popular.
761 high schoolers taking PE, health, or personal finance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that brings up a good Wait, oh, sorry.
No, no.
I was just going to say the failure word, I guess, yeah, just how you, how it's marketed, more like enrichment versus
We're trying to say
anyone that's doing this program is
Yeah.
struggling.
We're trying to say not yet. We're trying to shift that language of you
Right.
failed, now come back for summer school to not yet, you know, not yet, but you can get it. And also have it, you know how like, in the past, it would be, you just failed the class, like, so then you come into summer school and get a repeat, condensed repeat. This is really asking teachers, tell us what were the specific standards that the student didn't master during the course of the year, and then help us make a plan so that they can go ahead and master them when they're in summer school.
I know we're all tired, but I just have to say my first graders' teacher did a positivity thing with him where they, I guess, told him to say yet at the end of anything, like, I can't do math well.
Yet.
Yet. But he started saying it all the time, like, you need to go up and brush your teeth, you haven't done it.
Yet.
He's like, yet. You can't just always say yet. Sometimes you just got to do it.
Created a monster.
Not yet.
Ms. Kastner, I, or, or, or Ms. Collins, are any of the people from our virtual school in this referral group, how, I mean, I've, I've been concerned about the performance of that group of our students. And are they still in a separate universe, or is this open to them in the summers?
We, we, they, they would fall under the same identification criteria if they haven't completed a course yet, or if they are, are behind the benchmarks in the K through eight, they are in these numbers.
And I guess maybe later it'll be a question for Mr. McLaughlin about how, what was their performance with all virtual compared with our high school. And he's not, he's already saying, he's all over it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, thanks, Ms. Kastner.
Thank you for your time.
We'll come back after summer school to tell you actually how many students attended, because that's part of our, the struggle is we identify the students, but getting them to, to this opportunity sometimes is difficult.
Right.
So we'll come back and give you a report after summer.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next item is a report on our June 13th school board retreat.
Which will be very brief.
Doctor, okay, Dr. Akoff.
I prepared a 50-slide presentation.
Yes, can you load the slides, Jennifer?
We won't watch that yet.
As you are well aware, you tasked Katrina Colson and me to work with Division to put together a retreat. And we have had varying, we have had different kinds of retreats over the years, but we thought that this year in particular, since we've only met three times now in person, and two of our members were newcomers when we went into the COVID pandemic, that it would be particularly valuable to me to discuss how we interact with one another, how we can be more effective with the community, how we can be more effective working with the superintendent. And the, the retreat itself is going to be a half a day. We used to have them all day long, but we got plum-tuckered out. And this is looking, well, I, I'm not going to describe it any more than that, other than what we are doing is asking all of the board members to read the Five Habits of High-Impact School Boards. And we have the contents of that divvied up into three chunks of, of work. And you're not to put together a slideshow, but you are to lead the discussion and sort of push us. In addition, you may recall that Katrina led the charge in redesigning our self-evaluation tool with some input, but, and that we thought it was, would be the most effective not to wait to the end of the year and look through the retrospective scope about how we did, but look at what we're up, what we are doing, what we could do better, et cetera. That is basically the retreat. And I don't know, Katrina, if you want to add anything to that?
I would add that feel free to take whatever path you want to take when preparing your section. So you're each responsible for a, a section of the retreat. I can tell you, Cadence Eyes is habit number five, and that's, I think, public engagement. And so depending on what you want to do for your section, you can have a, a work product or something that you want to create, you know, like Kate and I were thinking of doing something where we reinvigorate some of the discussions we've had about community engagement and tracking it and having a process in place so we know that we're actively getting out to schools and to different parts of the community. So we hope you take ownership of your section. Nothing is set in stone, so if there's something that's really appealing to you in the book that you're not assigned to, please let us know, and we'll see if we can move things around.
And just to point out, Ms. Colson, that Kofi is in our group too, so I, I am delighted. I know that there's little inhibition about sharing opinions, and so I'm looking forward to that input.
Of course.
So, Kofi, you do have this on your calendar of events?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Oh, and location, we're planning to have it out at Western High School, get out of the urban ring for a while.
And have a break to actually tour the school and get to see.
I suggested we have it in the environmental studies lab. I've been told it might be a little
It's stinky.
Stinky, yeah. I was trying to think of the perfect word for stinky, decaying plant materials and fish tanks, et cetera. So I'm not sure, we may get a tour, but I'm not sure that's what our lo, final location will be.
That will also be the last day that teachers are in the building, I believe, so we'll have a chance to talk to teachers.
You and Katrina can handle the stinky part, you're going to be touring out of a plane next.
It was appealing because it had outdoor terr, it has outdoor deck areas and we could move around, but we can figure it out.
Okay, thank you both. All right, next is the school board salary advert, advertisement. And just a short statement to sort of make sure we're all remembering this. An elected school board may pay each of its members an annual salary that is consistent with the salary procedures and no more than the salary limits provided for local governing bodies. The school board has adopted the procedure currently used by the Board of Supervisors in setting its member's salary per se into Virginia Code Section 15.21413.3. Specifically, the school board will establish its member's salary by affirmative vote annually between May 1st and June 30th. Before setting its salary each year, the school board is required to hold a public hearing and provide notice as specified in Virginia Code Sections 15.21426 and 1427. The salary increase is approved by an affirmative vote, then the increase will take effect on July 1st. So we need a motion to direct the board clerk to advertise for public hearing a school board member's salary of $7,916 with their chairman's status of one stipend, rather, of $1,800, and a vice chair stipend of $35 per meeting chair. Currently, we, our salary is $7,183, so it's going up to $7,9116. But we need to tell the clerk to advertise for public hearing, and then we'll be voting on this in the May meeting.
In the June meeting.
June, okay. So could we have a motion to direct Ms. Johnston to advertise?
I move that we direct Jennifer Johnston to advertise for public hearing, a